The Committee of the Whole is called to order. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session Google Drive folder labeled 22122, Committee of the Whole. Let's go over some rules of engagement. There'll be three rounds for discussion. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel. Each senator has five minutes for questions not including responses. Time to speak may not be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time yielded was not used. After the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused. The third round is for amendments or comments. After we complete discussion of the bill, I'll allow the sponsor to close and I will entertain a motion for the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole. We are on Bill Number 212-36, COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts, introduced by Senator Joe Sinagastine. Sergeant Arms, can you swear in the panel members?
If I can ask the panel to please rise and raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, Diola firm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth of your opinion. Mr. Chairman, you may proceed.
Thank you. If I can begin first by allowing the panel members to introduce themselves into the microphone for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Benaventi, General Manager, Guam Power Authority. John Kim, CFO from Guam Power Authority.
Graham Botha, Guam Power Authority, General Counsel.
Tina Garcia, Gita, Public Finance Manager.
Okay, at this time, I'll call upon the, allow the primary sponsor of the measure to begin with his opening. Senator Sinagastine, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak on Bill 212-36, as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts. When the Guam Power Authority came to me requesting my support for the introduction of this bill, I had to approach this carefully about how the savings generated would benefit our ratepayers, our families, who need the utility for life-saving purposes and for just everyday necessities. Our work is required to approve their request to go through the bond, and it doesn't end with us. Our approval is just one step before the utility can proceed to request the approval of the PUC to refinance. We've learned that bond interest rates have been very favorable for refinancing. This evidence, this is evident from recent government Guam bond activity where our government issued six bonds at very favorable interest rates and very well received by the bond market. The revenue bond interest rates are at a historic low and the bond market's appetite for triple tax exempt bonds remains strong. Presenting favorable bond refunding environment, both rates are rising and the Federal Reserve has indicated that we will see an interest rate hike as early as next month, March 22, March 2022. My colleagues, it is prudent and necessary that we act immediately to approve this refinancing effort to allow GPA to acquire a more favorable interest rate. GPA has three outstanding revenue bonds totaling approximately $503 million. Its 2012 Series A bond is callable in 2022, while the 2014, 2017 bonds are callable in 2024 and 2027, respectively. GPA has been, has seen proposals from two major underwriters, both indicating GPA could refinance its 5% bonds at around 3.2%, resulting in reduced annual debt service payments by about $15 million. These potential outcomes were estimated by GPA's new underwriters, Bank of America and Wells Fargo, and are compliant with the mandated benchmark which bond refinancing is authorized. The restructuring of 2012 A bonds can maximize GPA's annual cash flow savings of approximately $15.1 million beginning 2024 through 2030. I look forward to discussion on Bill 212 and ask my colleagues for their support on the measures so we can continue to help our people realize savings and utilities we pay while increasing the capacity for utility to ensure adequate service for our island. This is Marcin, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastine. We'll begin round one now, and we'll begin with the front row, starting with Senator Moylan. Senator Duaneus. Senator Torres.
I just wanted to ask again, I believe it's stated in the bill, but the final maturity of the refunding bonds, the maturity date still remains the same, is that correct? So we're not extending it beyond what the life of the original bond series was, is that correct?
That's what I was looking here, paragraph C of Section 2. Our request really is to extend the term of the bond up to 2044. That would accomplish the, again, in the industry, what we try to do is really the life of the equipment, let the ratepayers of a particular year pay for the equipment. So what we're refinancing today are still longer life equipment, and it's going to bring, what we're trying to do is for, to avoid, is to decrease our costs when the, when a new plan comes on the line in 2024, 2025. So the lower we can get the debt service and absorb part of the new one is in the best interest of the ratepayers. If that section was taken out, I believe the reduction in debt service to the ratepayers is about 3. something versus 14.5?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's, you know, it really doesn't accomplish the entire goal of what we're trying to do to provide the ratepayers with substantial rate savings in 2025 upon the completion of the new power plan. So this was all part of the plan, and again, Section C, the striking out of that particular section, really is counter to what we've been asking for, no?
Okay, yes, I understand what you're, what you're saying, and the end result, really, the net effect of this is to realize a savings set will, that you've estimated at about $15 million over the course of the remaining term, right? That's essentially it, okay. All right, I just, I was a little, it wasn't as clear, so I just want you to point that out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Speaker.
I was wondering if the panel could explain, the amended bill has two additional subsections, those two subsections, H and I on page four.
Yes, on Section H on page four, this will probably give us problems because if we do the extension of the bond, the net present value savings will be different, so this will be difficult for us.
Can you repeat that?
Oh, sorry. For six, for Section H on page four, this paragraph requires us to get the best, should be for the greatest possible net present values. What we want to do, oh, sorry. So what we want to do is to extend the term by additional 10 years. So this will hamper what we want to accomplish.
So you don't support this?
We don't support that paragraph H.
What about I?
Madam Speaker, with regard to paragraph I, GP has no objection to that. It was, our understanding is that the 90 days was to give sufficient time. We did speak with the PUC, ALJ, ALJ Horeki, on this matter, to give both GPA and the PUC sufficient time to bring the plan for the savings to the Guam Legislature and file that as we have done normally.
Thank you. Could Gita please explain H and I?
So H just talks about debt service payments of the refunding bonds to be restructured to provide the greatest net present value savings on the aggregate debt service of the 2012. So again, when we go out, it just requires us to maximize the savings and, and then maximize savings lowering interest rates within the restructuring. And then I is just reporting back to the legislature by the Guam Power Authority and Guam PUC on the plan regarding the savings.
Can you address the concern about the term length?
So I think the, the thought is that without the extended maturity, the max, without extending the maturity of the current bonds, you would achieve savings, but not at the maximum level that was proposed in the initial request by GPA.
So does the language prevent that? What does this language do for that?
It doesn't prevent it. It's just that GPA's proposal included additional savings, by additional savings by extending the maturity.
Where, where in the bill is that?
So on page three, Section C, the original request was to extend, to allow them in the restructuring, refunding of the bonds, to take the 2012 maturity of the refunding bonds to be no longer than the existing bonds.
Can you tell us the amounts then that this bond is going to secure for us and, and in both scenarios?
So the proposal that we, that was requested and structured with GPA, again, their reasons for the refunding of the bonds was different from our normal restructuring. And so the original request was to extend the maturity by at least four additional years. The savings there, the net present value savings was $15.4 million or 5.39. But, but again, what that does is it allows some near present value savings that GPA was looking to have. If we just did a straight refunding, again, you're, you're, you're looking at net present value savings of up to 45 million of, or 17%. But again, you're looking at level savings across the maturity up to the current 2034. So again, the reason for the refunding was different from the traditional savings. I believe the testimony was to allow for additional near-term savings for GPA.
I'm sorry, Tina, please explain more. Maybe just, yeah, start from the beginning.
So if we do a traditional refunding, of course, you're gonna, what we've done with most of our bonds is we've, we haven't, we refinanced, seek lower rates, but we don't extend the maturities. The, but then that would just fit for near-term savings. The request, for GPA, there were different reasons for the refunding that prioritized the, that would change the restructuring. And again, the restructuring is to assist with some near-term upfront savings within the first five years. And I believe, I think GPA, John Kim, can explain the reasons, or John Benaventi can explain.
No, I just want to know the number difference, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the difference is there. I mean, whenever you're extending, you're paying a little bit more, but again, depending on what you have facing you, you would restructure based on what your needs are.
Yeah, but what is the cost going to be in both scenarios, please?
The net present value for a straight refunding would be about 45 million. The net present value for the structure we are requesting will be at 15.4 million. The savings goes from 17 million to 5.39% savings. So again, we're still, we're still, we're still saving money even with the extended maturity.
Saving money?
Lowering our debt service.
Yes, but what about overall?
Overall, that, that was the overall number. So we're saving 15.4 million even with the extended maturity, because again, you're talking at a time when interest rates are very low, so, so we're able to achieve a lot of different objectives.
Right, but the bill does not, so the bill now, the amended bill has, does not extend the maturity?
Yes, I just saw that now.
Okay.
Yeah, I just saw that now.
Okay, so can you just repeat the numbers then for this bill as amended?
So if we went out and refunded the bonds straight as is, we would be saving, we would have a net present value saving of 17%. If we did it at the request of GPA, we would, we are, we would target a net present value saving of 5.39%.
So 17% equals what?
17% or about 45 million.
Okay, 45? 45, okay, thank you. All right. For GPA, so the last time we, you know, authorized refinancing of a bond, we also put in there an amendment that said, you know, we wanted the savings to benefit taxpayer, or ratepayers, rather. And so we got the report from you and the CCU resolution stated that the savings would be used for $500,000 for the BEST, Best Schools Program, and remaining savings balance would go to GPA's DSM rebate program. This was, I think, an estimated 1.6 million total? Yeah. Is there an, I, that's not what I guess I had in mind in regards to ratepayers. I mean, I'm thinking about residential ratepayers most especially, who are having a hard time right now. Is there any other more direct way that we can allow these, use these savings to benefit the ratepayers?
The, going back to the two scenarios, Madam Speaker, the reduction in debt service or your annual mortgages, beginning in 2025, no, or 2024, is about $15 million. If we do not extend and refinance, the reduction is only about $4 million a year in your mortgage payment. So there is going to be a big difference in savings that will come back to the consumer as a result of fuel savings in the.
How is that coming back to the consumer? It looks like it's a savings for GPA in their operations, perhaps?
Yeah, I was going to go through that.
Okay.
Okay. When the new power plan comes on the line, of course, we have to pay for the power plan, correct? So therefore, when the new power plan comes on the line and those renewables, there's going to be substantial fuel oil savings that is going to occur, and all of that is going to have to be used to pay for the new power plan and the balance of it to return to the customer. So if the 14 million, if the debt service is not reduced by 14 million, they're going to, we're going to have to find another $12 million that we.
Pardon?
We have to find another $12 million so that we can maximize savings back to the consumer, because it's like, the consumers that are going to get the, the real big savings are going to be after 2033, but not the consumers of today, because you're only reducing their mortgages from, from where it is today, you're going to be reducing it only 4 million versus what we're asking to reduce it to 15 million. So therefore, the savings to the customer is much less the customers of today, maybe the ones in 2033.
But how, how will it translate to savings for the ratepayers of today? As opposed to, I can see how it's going to save GPA overall, right? In its operation costs or whatever cost you're talking about, the rate, the debt service, but how does that reduce a power bill?
Okay. So let me go back to, to why are we doing all these things, no? Maybe that, I need to start with that, right? There's really four major areas of why we're, we have a plan together and have been moving forward. It's one, to meet the consent decree and avoid millions of dollars' worth of penalties for noncompliant plans, okay? Two, to allow more renewables into the system, we need a new plan that would allow and make us work with that.
Okay, all of that, though, is not the reason we're refinancing.
If I may, Madam Chair, I need to tell you the whole, in my opinion, I need to advise you why we're doing all of this, and then you will, hope you would see the differential, no? Third, is to replace all the H plans that we have, 25 to 50 years old, no? It may sound like a broken record, but that's the way the plans are today, and they're not going to last for the years to come. The other thing is, of course, you have to meet the low growth. We have the military growth that is happening on the island. In the next three years, the military base is going to come online, plus other customers. We're going to do all that, we came out with a plan with the PUC, so that we can accomplish all of this, no? And provide rate savings to the consumer when the new power plan comes on the line. So part of the ways that we were doing to, to make this happen, and again, each one is a particular part of the whole equation, is just refinancing $15 million reduction on the debt service, remember? Because there's two parts of the, of the GPA rate. One is the base rate, and one is the fuel oil savings. There's going to be a lot of fuel oil savings, but of course, we have to pay for the new plan and its operational maintenance. So how do we pay for it and reduce our total costs? And, and when I say reduce our total costs, it's really all going back to the consumers, no, to the ratepayers. So again, refinancing is one of it, which is about $15 million. When we retire Carbus 1 and 2, that's another 8.5 million. When we retire some other equipment, that's another $5 million. Insurance is going to go down about $4 million. And again, when we're going to do slow tank kits and everything else as a result of the new construction, it's another $7 million. So when you put all of this and what we have to pay for the new power plan, for capacity fee and operational maintenance fee, that's about $70 million, no? So when you take this, the total fuel savings, which is close to $100, $100 million, minus the 70, plus all of this, everything else, including the 15 million, will go back to the ratepayer. And so if, if we're not able to accomplish the 15, then, then the ratepayer savings will be less, and certainly not as significant as what we had planned to do. So that's why the refinancing for, for, I mean, you can take all the cash today and get a big, higher 45 million in cash or, or savings today, but it's not the cash that we're looking for today, is how do we bring this for the future of the ratepayers? And why is that? Madam Speaker, for so many years, whenever the fuel oil prices rise to the ceiling like it has done today, look at the LiAC rate. It's up to 18 cents, no? And so what we're trying to do by 2011, 2025, I'm sorry, full year, is reduce that LiAC down to about 11 cents a kilowatt hour, and then maintain it and sustain it for years to come, because we are going to be consuming 1.2 million barrels less of oil a year with the new plan. So paying it today, paying it and planning for the payment of that without increasing the rate, because for so long, we have gone before the PUC, and that was their biggest concern about a new power plan, is how do we pay for it? So we came out with this plan, and so far, we are in tune with the plan, and that's why we're, we were here before you to, to help us reduce the debt service coverage. So it's really not just about today, it's about the near, near term, the 2025, and more importantly, way beyond that. This is our opportunity to be able to sustain our, our rates in a low level and not get, not get caught in this windmill of 2012, when oil went up to 100 some dollars a barrel. We were paying 29 cents for the residential consumer. Today, we're paying about 27, 28 cents. The new plan, which includes this program, is going to bring that down to 21. And again, we have an additional plan beyond that that will bring that down to about 19 and sustain it there. So this is really, it's not, you know, my apologies, it's, it's not just about, am I going to save something for today, which you could do in this scenario, but it really reducing the debt service, the difference between, you can give them the four today, but then you're going to take it away when we get, when we get to 2025. And you're, and you're taking it away and giving it to everybody that is in 20, that is using the power in 2034, no, and to 2044.
And when?
Because the power will, you, you will, when the, when the debt goes away, of course, there's a savings in 2033, 34. But then, you're going to have the people of today, the people, the rate customers of 2025, paying a higher rate so that they can just pay off the debt, instead of managing the total cash flow of everybody and letting everyone pay for the, for the service that they're going to get from the equipment, the infrastructure that is in there, which still has a long life to go, to absorb that, see? So what we're trying to do is really levelize the total savings for everybody as soon as possible. So that's, that's why it kind of tie in. If you don't, if you don't make it, 12, if we don't take the savings fully for, for the $14 million, then there'll be an impact on the rates in 2020, 2025. You can drop it.
And that was the plan that you made with the PUC when you planned the new power plan, that the rates would go up?
No, the total savings would be more for everybody, but remember, the base rate pays for the power plan, operation, and maintenance. The fuel is just the few costs or savings. So you're going to have to put in enough money in there to cover the new power plan, operation, and maintenance. So what we've been trying to do is keep that from going up, keeping our rates from going up, and if it did go up, very minimally, right?
Right, so when you committed.
So the 12 million, that, that debt service is part of that rate at that period of time. So if it doesn't, we don't accomplish this, then. So if it doesn't, we don't accomplish this, then that percentage of rate is gonna go up on the base rate.
And that was the original plan, when you, when you committed to build the new power plant?
No, the original plan is to try and get the fourteen million, uh, the original plan with the PUC, the plan with the PUC, what we presented, I've been work, I mean, we've been working on. So try not to increase the base rate and it included the refinancing, see?
So when you committed to, you've already committed to build the new power plant, right? And, but you're saying at that time, you, you committed also to refinancing?
To, to, to commit to the new power plan had to be approved by the PUC.
Right.
For the PUC to.
Without the refinancing having been approved at that time.
For the PUC to approve the, the plan, because they were concerned about rates going off the ceiling, they wanted to see a plan. So we came together and put together a plan which showed what you, what I'm mentioning today, what I've just mentioned. So that's, and so they took comfort with that and of, and we moved up, we moved forward.
So in order to get approval from the PUC for the new power plant, you committed to refinancing this prior to this bill even being introduced?
We committed to the initiative to pursue refinancing, no?
And then, um, the, you're saying the Li, the LiAC will be reduced when the new power plant is online and you expect that to be twenty forty-two? What year?
Twenty twenty-four, the plan will come on the line and the numbers I'm giving you is a full-year operation in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and so the LiAC will be reduced because a new power plant will use different fuel and that this money, then the refinancing will be able to, um, can we see those papers that you gave to the PUC that showed what this refinance is going to do to the base rate? So you're saying it's keeping the base rate down, right? Even after building up the new power plant? I guess that's what, yeah, I just wanna.
I don't, I don't have those.
Because otherwise, I wanna commit it to either, yeah, LiAC reduction immediately or, or you're saying you're gonna hold it until twenty twenty-four and, uh, and use it at that time for, um.
The.
The savings.
The savings won't come until the fuel, the fuel.
No, the savings on this bond will come immediately.
Uh, yes, but again, it's a short-term.
Right, and so that immediate savings, what will happen to it? You're, you're gonna just bank it until the new power plant comes online or, or do you put it towards LiAC for all of us ratepayers? Or do you put it towards the base rate today or not?
The savings don't begin until twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four?
Yeah. So when the new power plant comes on, no, that's when the savings will start, the.
All right, Tina, can you confirm that? Because on the last refinancing, when you guys came in here, I think we banked that into our budget for that immediate fiscal year or the next fiscal year.
For the B, for the business privilege tax, um, yes, there was savings from the debt service, um, but that's because we took it across, you know, all the way across. Um, yeah.
So explain this one.
So what they're doing is instead of paying fifty, close to fifty million through twenty thirty-four, they're going to drop the debt service to a little over thirty mil beginning twenty twenty-four and keep it at thirty mil all the way. So, so that additional savings, um, will help lower their debt service costs for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, for, for the next eleven years. And then the additional ten years, again, will be level, it'll be level all the way across and as you pay off older debts, again, your, instead of your debt service being here and then dropping, it's more like here, level all the way for a longer period.
So what happens after the, the bills pass and you, you, you go to the bond market right away? And so what happens between then and twenty thirty-four?
So, um, they're going to reduce some of, um, twenty twenty-two will be reduced, uh, twenty thirty-four will stay the same. And then beginning twenty twenty-four, it'll drop from about fifty to a little over thirty.
Is it twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-three, they're still gonna maintain the same debt service.
As today?
Yes, of about, almost fifty for the bond.
So even after passing this, the debt service will stay the same?
Yeah, because again, they're, you know, like, um, that's the way they want to structure it, where you would see the first savings in twenty twenty-four.
Is that shown in the bill or that's something?
It was part of GPA's testimony.
Right, so that means when you guys go to the bond market, you're going to make those conditions? Can you tell us then all the conditions that we should know?
So what, what we do is we, we go to the bond market with a structure saying we're gonna sell so many bonds in.
Right, no, but the ones that you've agreed to with GPA?
Right. So what we're talking about is selling certain maturities. And it's exactly that, you know, you, we would, um, our debt service savings. Our debt service savings again would begin in twenty twenty-four with an extended maturity from twenty thirty-four to twenty forty-four, which is the existing, where the existing bonds mature.
Do you have that in writing? If you have these, can we see that? Mr. Chair.
It's the committee report, the attachment.
If I may draw everyone's attention to the committee report, we did attach, uh, what, uh.
What's that called? That's from Gita's testimony?
GPA.
Oh, GPA. I'll look again, Mr. Chair.
It's attached to on the committee report, I, I can show.
Mr. Chair, is that a certain number on the committee report?
The, I, I don't recall the page number, but if you, it's towards the end of the committee report, I believe, we attached the, uh, there's three scenarios there for bond refinancing. And we attached those three scenarios.
All right, I'll, I'll look again, thank you, Mr. Chair. So between now and twenty twenty-four, Mr. Beneventi, you're saying there will be no savings, so there will be no responding savings for, for the ratepayers until twenty thirty-four? Or twenty twenty-four, thirty-four, twenty-four?
That's correct, Madam Speaker. The savings from the restructuring will begin in twenty twenty-four, just in time to meet the, uh, the new, the own commissioning of the new power plant.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Shelton. Vice Speaker. Senator Brown.
Overall, I just wanna ask also, Gita, I mean, are we still having favorable market response on our bonds? I mean, we talked earlier about the others that have recently been executed. Are, is the market still receptive at this time?
Yes, as you know, the, the bond rates last year were at their all-time lowest. They've talked about starting to go up this year, but, um, they're still pretty low.
Okay. And what are the timelines that you're looking at, assuming we get this bill passed this session?
We want to.
That you would be able to go out and pursue this process and?
Uh, yes, we're hoping to price these bonds before the next bond debt service on April tenth so that we could, um, include that as part of, um, the new bonds.
Okay. Well, I mean, Mr. Beneventi, I mean, you pretty much outlined what the intended use was for the savings to kind of re offset additional costs that otherwise our ratepayers would encounter. I mean, granted, we're going through challenging times just with the fuel costs, gas, everything else in our community, so I don't have any intricate questions at all for you and you certainly have my support on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Ada.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps Gita or, or GPA could ask this, answer this question. On the, on page four and H, is that, was that language at the request of Gita or GPA?
Senator, the language in, in, on page four, in paragraph H and I was not at the request of GPA. We have no objection to section I, but obviously, Mr. Beneventi has outlined the challenges with regard to section H and section C, which was changed. We were unaware of the changes until arriving here today.
So is that question, is that paragraph by the request of Gita on page four, H?
No, it was not.
It was not? I see. So would there be a problem if, because GPA said that they would not be able to adhere to that paragraph, is there any objections to have it being removed by Gita, or is Gita an objection to having it removed?
I think, I mean, I would have to verify with bond counsel if there's anything that could tie it, but I think when you talk about the greatest possible net present value savings, I think that's, um, the, the issue that GPA would have.
I see.
Knowing what they know.
And what would that be, knowing that you know, what you know? What would be the, that, the concern there of having that paragraph placed in or remaining in the, in the, in the bill?
Uh, it doesn't accomplish our overall objective of getting the lowest cost for the ratepayers by the twenty twenty-four, once the new power plant comes on the line. It, it doesn't accomplish it. It, it, like a, like a noted, uh, it only provides the savings really for, uh, it limits the savings to our, our, our more immediate to our customers in twenty twenty-four and on and provides that to the customers from twenty thirty-four and beyond.
And that's what you were explaining earlier with speakers.
And so therefore, to avoid rate, you know, to maximize the, it won't maximize the savings to the ratepayers in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five. Uh, that's fif- whatever it is, uh, there's fifteen million minus the four, so there's eleven million less savings to the ratepayers from twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-three. That's for the, you know, the more immediate future, no?
Okay. So Gita will, will get back to us on if there's any issues with this paragraph being deleted from the bill with bond counsel?
Sure, yes.
All right, thank you. That's the only question I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Tidigui.
Sejuas, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to everyone from GPA and, and Gita, thank you for being here. It said, you said, um, section H and C is an issue with GPA? Uh, just wanted to make sure. H and C, or C and H of the bill?
That's correct.
Okay, what do you, um, recommend in place? Or just take it out altogether?
We need to add back the language in the C and remove, uh, H, paragraph H.
Okay. And remove H, right?
That's, that's correct, Senator.
Okay. Um, John, what is the, uh, the current balance of all the bond obligations and what percentage of GPA's budget is reserved for debt service annually?
On the base rate side, I can, uh, no, you're talking about the, the ratio of the, what we pay?
Yeah.
Versus the rates, the revenue we receive from the rates per year?
No, the, the bond obligation, all your bond obligations and what percentage of GPA's budget is reserved for debt service?
Well, we pay about forty-seven million, all of our hundred and sixty million of base rate revenues.
And then, um, you, so you pay about a, a four hundred, I mean, a forty-seven million annually? Okay. What is the?
That's correct, forty-seven, all of about a hundred and sixty million revenue is what we pay. So what we're asking is that forty-seven million be reduced down to, uh, minus fifteen million dollars by extending the, the length of the maturity. So that it would allow us, again, to keep the base rate as low as possible for years to come. If you don't extend it, there's, then the drop will be in step from forty-seven down to thirty-two or so, it'll be just from forty-seven to forty-three million. So therefore, we have to find, you know, from our plan, we have to find an additional eleven million somewhere to be able to provide the consumer, like the ratepayer, what we had projected we will do, no?
Okay. So John, to what extent has GPA's revenue stream been impacted due to COVID-19 pandemic and has GPA experienced challenges, challenges meeting any of its financial responsibilities, including the bond obligations, vendor payments, personal compensation and benefits and et cetera?
We've been fortunate that we've been at an excellent financial strength scenario. Although we had seen a drop in revenue by about seven percent, most of that now has recovered and just because of the change of, uh, utilization by, uh, customers, residential consuming more because they're mostly, you know.
Tourism, yeah.
Even a home and different things like that. So in terms of, of that, that's the, other than that, we have worked through the COVID, providing the service with, oh, in addition to that, we have in our, we had in our cash reserve, we had advanced that to the ratepayers by keeping the rate as low as possible, not, not collecting, not disconnecting customers during the pandemic. And therefore, we have an under recovery somewhere about twenty million, meaning to behold, uh, we were, we had to recover about twenty million from the ratepayers, which we have, we've all agreed to kind of lay it there for a while and just allow the, you know, because again, we're in another scenario where fuel prices are rising. And so the PUC, uh, raised it a one cent in the last, beginning February first, but again, we're holding that for the next six months despite the continued increase in prices. And all that is coming from our cash reserve, no? Because we were financially have the cash reserve to be able to absorb something like this. But this, now the scenario comes that if we don't adjust the debt service and the mortgage, it would affect our debt service coverage required by the bond, minimum of one point three. And so to meet that one point three, we'll have to raise the base rate. So that's why it's important to try and reduce the, you know, the annual debt service from, uh, from where it is today by the fifteen million that the refinancing and the restructuring will do.
Thank you, John. And, you know, I mean, the climate is right, we all know that. I know there's a deadline from Gita in July, I think, of this year, that it has to be, it's, I guess, the maturity timeframe. You know, it's important to go through. But what is, you know, my last question really is, what is GPA doing, uh, you know, in, in short, to reduce or otherwise control expenditures in face of this pandemic? And, you know, I mean, it's one thing to keep borrowing and, you know, finding savings there, but what is GPA doing to find savings within your department?
Uh, first of all, GP has not raised the base rate since twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. So we've been living within that means, even with, you know, labor, everything else, even despite the inflationary action. What's most important to us is that throughout from twenty twelve and even today, there's a repeat in history where fuel prices have gone off to the ceiling again. And that's what we're feeling again today and, you know, twenty twelve, that's where it was, it went up to, for the average residential consumer, twenty-nine cents a kilowatt hour. And right now, they're at twenty-eight cents a kilowatt hour based on the latest LiAC rate and rise, prices are still rising. So the key really for the future of the island is to be able to minimize the. So the key really for the future of the island is to be able to minimize as much oil that we burn, no? To do that, there's a two-pronged plan, which is, one, add more renewables as mandated by the legislature, and secondly, put in a new power plan that is very efficient, no? And that will work with the renewables to make that happen. So the new power plan and the renewables coming on the line in 2025 is going to reduce the total import of oil into the island from 2.7 million to down to 1.5. That's 1.2 million barrels of oil that we're not going to have to import. And as a result of that, at today's $100 a barrel, that's 100, 120 million that will stay in the economy. But more importantly, we have 25% renewable, very efficient power plant. So even if the oil prices went up, the impact won't be like this anymore. It will just be a gradual change until we put more and more long-term renewables that only escalate at 1% per year. So this is the whole plan and so that we can finally get control on the fuel component of our, of our rate to the customer. Because that's something that we'd never had, and I never believed that we could have had until we have come to this plan. So that's why it's quite important. If we stay on course, it is going to happen. And again, we'll put more renewables to make sure that we keep the money on the island from hence forward, no? So that's, that's why the, you can see probably the difference why we want the debt service to come down. And when it comes down like that, we can afford to pay it, keep the base rate, and the, and with base rate and oil, oil, fuel prices down, you're going to have a more stable and more sustained level of cost for, for the consumer on the island.
Thank you, John. Thank you so much for that. And, you know, we need to get there, to that point where we can start seeing these savings, you know, and, I mean, this is one way, you know, to start moving in that direction. And let's stay the course. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tegui. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel for being here. John, listening intently to the answers of the questions that have been asked, and I'm sure you recognize that as a body, we've been receiving a lot of emails concerning, you know, this bill and another bill. And I'm just trying to discern as to what the concerns are and what the issues are. With the cost savings that you anticipate with this bond refinancing, what is, you may have said it once before, but I need to hear it again or hear it. What do you intend to do with that cost savings?
The refinancing and the restructuring will bring our annual debt service payment, mortgage-type payment, from 47 million down to about 32 million, beginning 2024. So that will, so we're going to pay for the new power plan in 2024, right? So by reducing this, even though we're going to have a lot of fuel, oil savings, if we didn't refinance this, we're going to have to take some of that fuel savings to put in to cover the 12 million. So therefore, what comes back to the consumer is less, see? But by refinancing it, you get the refinancing savings plus the fuel oil savings after we paid the power plan going back to the consumer in 2024. There won't be any savings for us until 2024, the exact reason why we want, we want it, you know, it's time that we need it when we start paying for the new power plan.
You talked about the new power plan having the ability now to, I guess, the renewable energy sources. What are those renewable energy sources that you're talking about?
Most of the renewable energy sources that we, that has been the main capacity for Guam has been solar PV, no? So we have contracted for 120 megawatts to be on the line by December 2023 of solar PV with all batteries. We, the Superior Court of Guam was just able to rule in our favor, which allow us now to award another 40 to 50 megawatt of solar PV, which are going to be on Navy property. That one is going to catch all the energy in the daytime, and that's going to be used in the evening to shave the peak, the very expensive portion of the thing. So by 2023, around December or so, we're going to have 160 megawatts coming on the line. The first one is coming on the line in this May, the one up in Padayan. And then December 2023 is the, again, there's one in Hanwha. So that will give us 25% renewables by 2025. GPA, the recommendation and approved by the, by the CCU is to add another 400 megawatts between now and 2030. So we're going to be going out for more bits, going out to look at different character, areas of the island that we can put more solar PV, not just at any price, really an affordable price that will add to our goal of keeping rates down for years to come, no? So, so there, again, that would allow, another 400 megawatt center would allow us to achieve 50% renewable, not by 2035 as mandated by law, by 2030. And that IRP has already been approved by the CCU and is before the PUC now. That's the plan to make it happen. But it, yeah, so that's the combination of renewable and the new plan that you're going to be seeing, no, in the coming, coming years.
So the plan is about 400 megawatts additional. What's your, what's your?
Right now, we have, right now, we have about 25, no?
25 megawatts.
Then we're going to add another 160. So we'll have 185 by 2025. Then you add another...
Well, that's 185, but with no batteries, that's just daytime consume.
That's daytime. Some, a little bit of battery, but not for shifting, no? When I just talk about battery, I'm talking about catching all the energy because you cannot generate it in the daytime and put it into the system when no one's using it. You have to store it. So that's when the, this, the one on Navy property, that's the first model of a storage system that will shift everything, that will get us beyond that. So, so that's 185, plus our goal now is for another 400. So by 2030, the goal is to have about 585 megawatts of renewable capacity on the island. And that will serve, that will serve 50% of the energy required by the consumers of the island then.
Okay, obviously, sustainability and resiliency is going to be another discussion, right, because of natural disasters and other, other things. I don't want to get into that. I only have less than five minutes to go, but go ahead.
Yeah. And that's where the new power plan and the 41 megawatts and everybody are. When there's a disaster, they take over. When it rains, they take over. Until you get to some point where technology has it where you can sustain yourself. I don't doubt, though, you can sustain the island for one or two days with batteries. Well, what happens if it rains for 15, 20 days? The cost about, my estimate is for one day of full battery to run the island, it, you know, it's about seven cents a kilowatt hours for one day. For two days is 15, for three days, no, it's 14, for three days is 21, every seven cents. The new plan holds you for five, six cents on standby, no? That will be your, your cost to make it, to make the renewable. So it's going to be there through the storm, through anything for you, no? And that's why it, and it's the last one. It's the last conventional unit I see us building. But it's going to be, take us for the next 25, 30, 40 years.
So to go back to the initial question, then, I mean, it's that the savings to be realized in this is to help you, to assist you in being able to bring on another power plan online. Not so much for savings for the sake of savings, but savings so that we can, we can build other things.
No, I think, Senator, the savings is going to be to give you, the consumers, more savings, yeah. Because if you don't go with the restructuring that we're talking about, the debt service would only come down 5 million.
Sure.
Right? Instead of the 15 million. So what's going to happen is, is even if, in nature, in nature, the 10 million is going to go right back to the consumer in 2024.
Understood. And I bring this question because it gets past the, the whole thing of, it's, I, don't get me wrong, I do like the idea of as far as restructuring, if it means a lower rate, okay, and lower payments and stuff. My question goes beyond that. It's okay, what are we going to do with this, with this money afterwards, the savings? I appreciate it, though. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Talahi?
John, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I heard you correctly, but you mentioned something about 1% escalation, escalation per year. Can you explain that 1%, why not 2% or 3% or percentage beyond that?
We went out for a contract and we requested that the escalation rate for the renewables does not, is no more than 1%. Because the key here is we wanted renewables to keep our rates low and sustainable. So, so a 10% rate here in about 20 years will be about 11, 11 and a half at the most, no? So therefore, that's why we go out and when, if they're going to bid for, to sell us energy, this is what the price, this is your first price and everything else is 1% escalated, which is barely, it doesn't even take care of inflation. That way, we get away from this up and down of fuel prices. Because this one is just steady, only the fuel that's running, the less, the more renewables we have, the less impact that the fuel price have, see? So we ask for that.
Understood, understood. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Sinagastin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, if you, if you and your CFO can explain again, let's go back to the page three and page four. Be very specific. What are the issues on letter C? You like it restored to the way we initially first introduced the bill? Am I correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's, that's correct, Senator.
Okay, and on letter H, you like it to be removed so that we can follow exactly on page four. Remove letter H and letter I, you're okay with that?
That's correct, Senator.
Okay, and that will, that will make sure that the, the savings and the projection that you already proposed, that's going to end up, end up at PUC after what we're done here with this bill. It goes to PUC and then PUC will measure it and make sure that the people of Guam gets the best rates. Am I correct?
That's correct, Senator. The final decision on the structure and everything really is the PUC, no? The rate payer, because they're going to determine that. So what I've given you is our recommendation to them, in which, with the support to keep the rates down and maximum saving for the rate payer once the new plan comes on the land. So there's nothing different in what I'm bringing to you today as to what I have proposed to them. And so they will, you know, they will decide that once the legislature has given them authorization.
All right. Is there anything else on the bill that you believe may be troublesome or may, you may have some reservation on the amendments?
I think we're good. And I think Tina, you were going to check the legal counsel or?
But, but other than legal, I'm more concerned with GPA. When we first introduced the bill, now you have the amendment, are there any amendments that are there other than C and H that concerns you?
No, Senator.
Okay, and I'll go to Tina now. Tina, when you mentioned, first I heard earlier, you mentioned something like 45 minute if we stay the way the bills are in, but if we go back to originally, it would be 15 and it's spread out. The 45 is an instant savings, but today you save, tomorrow you spend. Did I hear that correctly? Or maybe you can repeat that for us?
Right. If we did the traditional refunding, no extension, you would save 4 mil a year for a total of 45 mil.
45 mil, a total?
Net present value savings.
But if you go with the, and that's referring to the amendments that is in the bill, correct?
Correct.
And with all the amendments that's on the bill, impact?
So we went to the original proposal. We would look at, yes, extending the maturity, but from period of 2024 to 2030, you would have 15 million in savings per year. 15, 1.5.
Okay, but, but Tina?
Yes.
If you go to page three, if we restore it back, it's very specific. So long as the final maturity of all, of all then outstanding revenues bonds is not exceed. So restoring it back stays at 15, but if you don't restore it and you let it just run loose, then you're talking 45? Is that what you're trying to tell me? I'm trying to understand your, your comment, because whatever's going on in C impacts what's H, and whatever happens in H is impact C, correct?
Correct.
So how do you refer to that you'd get 45 million dollars for a year, 4 million a year, whatever was involved?
So 45 mil, you're not extending maturity. With the proposal, we're still saving 15 million 5.39, but we're providing savings of 15 mil in certain periods. And, but we've pushed the debt service out an additional 10, 10 years to keep it level all the way.
I'm trying to understand when you make that statement, you extend it and letter C does not allow any extension, right? Or is it as final maturity of all then is not exceeded? Can you show me where in C that it says that it extends 10 years? I'm trying to find that.
The portion that says...
What page, what paragraph is?
On page three, letter C.
Right.
The final maturity of the new bonds shall not exceed the final maturity of the 2012 Series A revenue bonds. What was removed was final maturity of the latest maturing then outstanding bonds. So we have bonds that mature in 2044. The 2012 bond matures in 2034. So we're not going past the 2044.
If we, if we restore C, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
And GPA, can you comment to that? How, how you don't like it and, but it's, if you got 45 versus 15, I'm trying to rationalize behind this. Just so we make sure that we're on the same playing field. 45 and 15, wow, that's, that's pretty good savings. You could build a couple of power plants.
Well, the, the key is the, the 15 million versus 4 million reduction in annual payments. That would, that differential would allow us to pay for, for, you know, the new plan or anything like that, so.
Are you saying you've got a savings of 15 million a year versus like what Tina said is 4 million a year? You're saying 15 million dollars a year?
Yeah, the reduction in debt service is 15 million dollars a year now.
15 a year?
Yeah.
Versus four, okay. Understood then. Makes sense. I'd rather 15 than four. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Madam Speaker?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Tina, please correct me if this is right, Ms. Garcia. We have a proposal. The original proposal was, the bill, the original bill was, we were going to save a total of 15 million dollars over the course of the bond, and the bond was going to be extended for 10 years, right? And we would save different amounts... And we would save, um, different amounts every year, right? In, in re, um, bond, debt service payments.
Yes.
And in one of those years, we would have paid, saved fifteen million?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's the, that's the proposal that GPA wanted originally. The amended bill, I'm not sure whose idea this was, but I, I actually, if I'm reading it correctly and what, if I'm understanding it correctly, this amended bill will save forty-five million in the long run. It does not extend this debt onto future generations. It ends it when it was supposed to be ended. Forty-five million total it will save us. And we are going to save an approximately four million per year. So we will reduce our debt service still by four million a year. But it's just not the big fifteen million in one year that GPA wants. And so.
It's, um, I'm sorry, um, it's fifteen million for seven years.
Seven years, okay, what do you mean?
So from, from, in this scenario, again, as part of the committee report, it's reduced from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-thirty, to twenty-thirty by fifteen-point-one mil approximately.
Okay. Okay. Oh, not ten years, you're saying? Seven years?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, still. Um, so by going in this amended way, we can save the forty-five million, right? It's just GPA won't get that cash all upfront. It would be spread out. Right? The savings and, but, um, so I was trying to figure out, you know, we wanna do this, of course, to save rate payers. And so they predicted that, um, the savings to the rate payers, we're going to see savings to rate payers because of the new power plant, because different fuel, we were gonna save rate payers, right? That's what you planned. And, um, when you told the PUC that you might refinance, we had no idea, I think at that time, what the actual refinancing might look like, right? So even with the refinancing as proposed in the current amended bill, it's still a refinancing and it still should result in, in rate savings. Isn't that right? Right? It's just gonna be a different than what the one, than another one. So I'm looking at, in the, in the front of that refunding scenarios that you sent me to in the committee report is a, is a chart and I hope, um, everybody can see it. It's called estimated bill in twenty-twenty-five for average residential consumers. So it says the existing rate, they're, they calculate an average to be a hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. Existing average residential customer rate. In twenty-twenty-five without refinancing, that rate, sorry, it will go from, not one-seventy-one, two-six-eight. So two-six-eight is the total, is a average residential bill right now. In twenty-twenty-five, the average residential customer without refinancing would be two-twenty-two. So there will be a savings, this thing shows, right? And then it says twenty-twenty-five with finance, financing is only two-twenty. In other words, I'm only seeing a two-dollar difference between financing and refinancing. So when we say we're saving the consumers by refinancing, it's not really showing a savings to consumers. It might be doing a lot of other things for GPA, like building up that savings pool that you described earlier that backs up, you know, your, your bonds and other projects. I'm hoping it's not going to any other thing at GPA, right? But it's not necessarily showing directly as a huge amount of savings to consumers, which is, which is what I always find very difficult when we do these refinancing. We're saying we're saving millions of dollars overall. But the, you know, the effect on an actual consumer is they can't see that. And I hate to say we're going to extend this out even longer, pay forty-five million dollars more. Not even us, actually, future people will be paying that forty-five million dollars more. I mean, we're all, that's the whole point. He wants to share it among us and, and other future consumers. And I don't know the philosophy behind that, if that's good or bad, but I just feel like if we can save the government of Guam forty-five million dollars and, then maybe that's not a bad idea. And I, 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 I'm trying to find out from Gita, you know? Aren't you our financial advisor? Can you advise us? I mean, isn't that the best deal we've got available to us at this point? That was, that came from, it looks like your bond advisors.
Right. You know, where, when we did the twenty-twelve bonds, our interest rate back then was four-point, about four-point-four percent. Even by adding ten years to this new bond that we're offering, because the interest rate environment is low, our interest rate is only going to be three-point-one-six. So, so again, you're, you're saving on interest payments. Um, well, the interest rate is lower so that even when you extend it, you're still having a savings overall.
Overall, yes. Yeah, so still there's an overall fifteen million savings versus an overall forty-five million savings, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a big deal. Well, um, let me see. My time is up? All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Torres.
Mr. Ven, Venavanti, I wanna go back though to the, the whole principle of why you are proposing that we go with your initial recommendation of extending it out and why you are, um, opposed to the insertion of H. As I, as I was trying to follow you when you were discussing your plan, the GPA plan and how there's gonna be construction of plants, there's gonna be the, the introduction of more renewable energies and how the two interplay in terms of of how much you're able to produce and store and, and what that balance is between renewable energy and energy that is being, um, generated by the power plants. So it, it seemed to me as I was trying to follow you that the whole premise for coming to the legislature with this proposed legislation and the, the the refinancing of the bonds is so that, so that the, the, the bond scheme jives with your proposed plan for GPA, is that correct? I mean, we're, I'm trying to, notwithstanding the, the discussion about what is the ultimate savings or, you know, what, who, whether it's bond council that recommends or GPA that recommends, what really is the correct balance that will, that will complement GPA's proposed plan going forward with renewable energy plants and, with renewable energy and new plans going forward? Can you, can you just, I, I, I wanna know what it is that, that really is going to be most advantageous for
Yeah.
the scheme?
Good, good questions, Senator. In addition to the savings being more in twenty-twenty-four for really current customers, if you will, the reduction of debt service also provides you an opportunity uh, to be able to look at funding even, you know, I didn't mention this before, even additional capital in the future. Because if you, if you don't reduce that debt service, we have to achieve fifty percent renewable, we have an investment for, uh, we have identified the potential investment requirement of about two-hundred-thirty million dollars over the next several years, no? To achieve that. We're gonna try and get it from grants or anything else that we can do. But even if I need it, we need it to go off for another bond issue to fund some of these improvements to be able to get renewables. The lower the debt service, the lower our monthly mortgage, our percentage or so and so, the better position we are. But really, the key here is that there's not much we can do for the customers of today until twenty-twenty-five, no? It's really, we're at the mercy of the fuel pricing. But once we get to twenty-twenty-five, we're gonna maximize all the savings we can get for our customer from fuel oil and from this debt service recovery. Because it's really a net, is whether you take it from here or you take it from there is, this is what it's gonna cost us for the new power plant and these are all the savings. The refinancing, the fuel oil, the retirement of cabras. So when we subtract the two, then that's the net that goes to the consumer. So if that twelve million is not in the, that fifty million is not in the mix, then it's twelve million, twelve million less going to the consumer. So, uh, and again, it's, you know, the utility is a perpetual company, so with long-term infrastructure, so the longer you can stretch out your payment plan is really, uh, and let each of the consumers in each of the years pay their fair share of it, the better it is for the consumer today. In addition to that, by keeping, doing that, at least for the consumers today, the new plan is also, and the renewables are also gonna service new customers, more load growth in the future, right? Bringing in more revenue. At that point in time, they can be paying for the additional revenues that's gonna be required in, beyond twenty-thirty-three. So we're trying to make the best deal for the, for the current customers and that's why we proposed the refinancing. And Tina is correct, really, if, it's like taking three percent money today, knowing that the rates are gonna be going up maybe to five percent again in about five years, no? When you need to go out and borrow some more money, see? So, uh, I'm not sure I explained it well enough, Senator. I'm just, I'm just saying the, uh, that's what we believe is the, the, the way it's set up is, is how we're gonna maximize that rate saving to the consumer in twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four.
From a practical perspective, I, I understand what you're explaining and that, I think, is the dilemma that, that is in the room. You know, what, what of the two formulas? My concern is what is the formula that will ensure that GPA can continue down its path of planning and achieve its goals? Because that's, that's what you're really up against is, is if you know what your mandates are for renewable energies, you know, by a certain year, you're at a certain percentage guaranteed, you're mandated. Um, I understand that the nuances of trying to reach that and finance everything with all the conditions as they are and occasionally fluctuating, um, it, it really is a, it's, it's a very, it's a very narrow road to travel, really. You've got a, you don't have much room for, you don't have much room in terms of, of when, when, you know, conditions are not advantageous to you in terms of meeting your obligation, your debt obligation. That's, that's what I'm concerned about.
And you're correct. Really, it provides us the better opportunity to be able to achieve our goal. And the goal is to get to more renewables and lower costs for our consumer. So, thank you, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Duñez.
Jesus Masi, Mr. Chairman. Because I think we're gonna be debating the proposed amendments here, I'm gonna try this, Tina. This kinda reminds me of a fifteen-thirty in terms of approaching mortgaging on a practical sense, as most of us have done with our homes. So essentially, you got this favorable rate now. You're gonna achieve the savings, but you gotta make a decision of do you need the savings over the long term? Or is it better to take it upfront? So by the table, and the way GPA is trying to do this is to make sure that they have it levelized for a longer period of time as opposed to any particular upfront. Or even if it was amortized, it's amortized at a smaller amount without carrying it out longer as opposed to a larger amount by carrying it out longer. Am I close?
That's right. Um, if we just did twenty-year debt, you're looking at a two-point-one-nine percent. But because our rates today are so low and if you're gonna remortgage your house, you, you maybe have someone going to college or something, you're gonna need some money two years from now. Or, you know, some cash flow relief to take care of emergencies. So, so that's why in analyzing this, the fifteen million during that period will, will help. And, and yes, you're extending debt, but your debt again will go, go, um, level through that term. So, so you, you have that cash relief long-term.
So as I heard you discuss, I don't think we would have a problem with the legality of the language in C if we restored the amendment or restored the language of the initial bill.
That is correct. That original language did come from bond council?
So when Senator Rada asked you basically, it would be if we didn't essentially go in. It looks like what we would have to do if that's gonna be the proposed amendment would be take out the underlying twenty-twelve Series A, restore the lined out and then it should be basically the original language.
Yes, Senator.
John, I think this is really important because I think the lines have been drawn and of course, after this round, we'll be in that fun round of amendments. But, um, so doing that, getting rid of H, essentially going back to the same model once again, so that there's a clear understanding for even our listeners and the like when it comes to being able to levelize and hold down the rates over the period of time that you need to and why the amortization schedule is more advantageous to take it out. And you still have the savings, it's just whether or not you have the four million per year on the current system or you're fifteen million for the seven in order to be able to get the maximum of savings uh, at, at the levelized for debt service. I, I just need you to put that, hit that home one more time because if not, we're not really achieving what you need in the original proposal. Is that correct?
That's correct, Senator. We don't restore that language, then we're, we're not achieving what we're, we've been trying to do to keep this rate as low as possible in twenty-twenty-four. It's the fifteen million versus four. And so for us to, you know, we've been, we made a commitment to the PUC and everybody, we're gonna try work real hard to keep that base rate where it is, even despite, so that more fuel savings can go to the consumer. And, and, and we call it a waterfall and we identified all the targets, the initiatives that we're gonna go after to make that happen. And one major part of that is the, the refinancing. So if it doesn't, then, then, you know, the impact on their base rate will be higher, uh, that time. Thank you, Senator.
And Tina, well, just one more time, while on the books, it looks like a straightaway financing here to the upfront maximum looks, looks advantageous. It actually levelizes over the term, even though it's amortized because of the favorable rate. Even though it's amortized longer, but over the term, the savings are still realized.
Yes, over the term, you're still realizing savings.
I think the final comment is the, aside from trying to use the standard mortgages, six of one or half a dozen or the other. This is what it sounds like to me, because it sounds like you achieve it, you're just, it's just whether or not, uh, because I, I think GPA basically doesn't need upfront savings. They need amortized savings. Because that levelizes the debt service, which allows them to control the costs on debt service and get to the fuel savings so that everything comes together and matches up with the plan going forward because the new plant's online and you start to retire more and more plants that are currently using all the expensive fuel into the newer fuel and it carries forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Venavanti. I appreciated earlier when you gave us a kind of an explanation of the history of how this all developed. It reminds me, and maybe I should be reading more when I get my power bill of that nice newsletter that you get in there too. I'm sure you reminded us then as well. I, I'll tell you what, I'll pay more attention to it next time. Um, I appreciate that you offered solutions because I believe you and your team really want this bill to move forward. And, um, good Senator Joseph Augustine, um, I think clearly stated those solutions, which I believe you and, uh, Gita also agreed to. So I'm glad that's well-defined. I think it was really important how you, how you put. I think it was really important how you, how you put, that this will be eventually, what your, what your GPA foresees with the PUC committee, we're going to reduce oil consumption for our, for our island. That's, that's wonderful. You're, and you're ahead of the game in increasing our renewables. That, that's, that's great again. And eventually, by doing all this, we're, we're going to reduce the importing of oil, which you so stressed that this is where all the fluctuation that we have no control over comes about. Mr. Brenavanti, you've been at GPA for how long, sir?
Forty years.
Forty years, okay. What did you start as? What was your first position?
I was a mechanical engineer. And the first project was the Cabras Power Plant and the fuel oil storage thing. And so that's, yeah, I've been around almost as old as the...
When did you assume your current position, after how many years?
Oh, 1987, when I first became general manager of the power.
I'm just trying to absorb that. That's really good. So I, I believe your team has really, with, with the committee, with the PUC board there, have really looked at what's the best for the island in the future. Have, have you ever come this close for this opportunity to happen in your career at GPA with you working at your team there?
We've always been working real hard to try and control as much as possible, knowing that any political, now Ukraine and everything that happens impacts the price of our consumers. And our consumers really, they don't really, you know, care. And I supposedly, of course, whether it's oil price or whatever, it's just their, their power costs are high. So we've been trying to find a solution for this. And certainly, we got, we got also into the position of the consent decree, not complying with rules and regulations. Remember, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars of potential penalties, load growth. Right now, we're in a situation where one Cabras unit is down, and we have only 50 megawatts of reserves. So if the second unit goes down, we're going to have to load shed some areas in the evening, no? So again, we, we want to get away from all of that. So that's, that's why we went out. And when we went out for bid on the new power plant, we didn't just ask for any new power plant, no? Although we said we open it up to anything. There's one other condition there. We asked for a power plant with a thermal efficiency of no less than 50% because we knew that by having a very efficient plan, you're going to reduce your, your cost of oil, and therefore you can pay for the plan and reduce the, you know, and have less impact to fuel. So that's why all of this has become apart together. And of course, it will work hand-in-hand with renewables and everything like that, and allow us to beat this mandate. So yes, I, I'd never thought that it'll come to this day although it's always been one we've been trying to achieve. So the reality is we're so close. We're two and a half years to three years away from making that, making that happy, making that happy, making that be a happy moment for all of us here.
Thank you, Mr. Brenavanti. And I really want to support this bill with, with the solutions and the amendments that both you and Gita have, have recommended. You use the analogy of this being part of the waterfall that you folks have been working so hard to get, to get what the island needs. And through your expertise and through your years of experience with your team, hopefully, this is just one of the little streams that go into that to make that happen for the island of Guam. So I thank you and your team. I thank Gita, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, what is your current debt service payment for the bond?
Per year, it's about 47...
No, for annually?
Yeah, 47, what is that?
47.
48 million?
48 million?
Annually?
And have you guys already made a, a payment for this year?
April 1st.
April 1st? Oh, and that's why Gita was saying that it's important to go to the bond market.
You save some payments, yeah.
So would you be making a payment? So let's say the bill passes today. Would you be making a payment or you'll be able to hold off on that payment while Gita goes to the market to refinance the bond? What, what, how does that work?
So we would, we would make, go to the market and reprice, price the bonds before the debt service payment so they understand that the bondholders will be paid off from another fund versus from GPA.
Okay, I see. So then you will have 48 million already set aside. What, what is GPA's plans with that 48 million? Since, when would the next debt service be paid? Is it next year, Tina? With the refinancing of the...
So they still have two other bonds that they're paying. So those will still continue to pay on, on the fourth. But for these bonds, you're going to, you're going to have about 8.9 million in savings. And what happens with those savings is that it reduces, it goes to reduce, um, it doesn't go back to GPA, it goes down to reduce how much you need to borrow for the new bonds.
Yeah, but so the set aside already, the 48 million that they pay annually, they won't have to pay until the following year, right? For the bond that's being refinanced, right?
The 48 is made up of three bonds, so they wouldn't have to pay for the 2012. So they just had to pay a portion of the bonds.
And what's, what's the, what's the debt service for this bond that we are refinancing?
For fiscal year 2022, the 2012 bond debt service is about 34 million?
34 million.
Just for this bond, the 2012?
Just for this bond?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we, we get this refinanced and everything, then less whatever fees or anything like that, savings, so what is, what's GPA's plans with the remaining of the debt service that they would have paid that they're not paying now? Of the 34 million?
So with, with the bond indentures, they require you to make monthly deposits towards the interest and the principal payments. So the bond trustee is holding those payments. It's no longer part of GPA. And any savings, even though you don't make that payment, they would, the trustee would hold it for the following, for the payment, the next payment that's due for 2023.
Oh, so it won't, so it's out of GPA's hands already?
Yeah.
I see.
I mean, the, the monthly deposit.
Yes, it's, for the bonds that we had to put aside by the trustee in a monthly basis. But the actual payments to the bondholders is on April 1st and also October 1st. Even with the refunding, the money has to be set aside until the, we, probably the earliest refund required is July, July 1st. So we set aside to fulfill until October 1st. And new payment plans will be effective October 1st with the refunding. So any money that we is obligated for 2022 has to be set aside to pay for the bond.
Okay. So then you guys will not be getting any cash?
No, there's no cash back to us.
Okay, all right, I see. So then, and that's why the importance of trying to get this bond refinanced out, passed by the legislature so that we can go out to the market by the April deadline?
Yeah, there, there won't be any cash back, but then they won't have to make that deposit for, for April, or, yeah.
Okay.
For the, for the next.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's the only question I have.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned earlier, I think GPA has outlined, and certainly Gita. Appreciate Ms. Garcia also elaborating on the issue with regards to this. As I mentioned earlier, I have no objection. It makes practical sense, the opportunities available to us to take advantage of it. And certainly, I, I think we should move forward with approving this legislation so that GPA, and more importantly, the ratepayers can take advantage of the financial benefit that we will reap from this, this bond transaction refinancing. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tidaway?
I have no questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Blas?
I'll defer my time over to Senator Son Augustine.
Senator Terlahi?
I'll refer my questions to Senator Son Augustine.
Is that, are you yielding your time to, I believe only one member can yield time. Senator Son Augustine, you do have extra time yielded by Senator Blas.
Not required, very simple. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just need GPA to... I'm, I'm going to introduce an amendment, okay? I'm going to make it very clear. I'm going to introduce amendment to get rid of, put, restore back C, get rid of H. I need you to be able to convince the colleagues and the people of Guam why that needs to happen. And if you can do that, I appreciate it. Just come out straight, and then we work from there. John or the CFO? Somebody on this side, speak for GPA. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Do you want me to repeat the question? Just go ahead.
Yes, for GPA, we like to add back the language on paragraph C on page three.
Have it restored to the original intent?
Yes, restore to original intent and remove paragraph H on page four.
Okay, now can you just explain and justify why that?
This will help us to maintain or reduce the rate, rate increase for the consumers and also meet the debt service, help us to, to fund the new power plant. And with the new power plant, we could achieve our objective for renewable energy and also reduce fuel consumption importation in Guam.
Okay, and can you please explain how the current amendment to the bill is a disadvantage to GPA versus restoring the bill as originally introduced is the best advantage to the people of Guam?
Yes, restoring the languages and removing the paragraph, restoring the language on paragraphs, section C and removing, removing section H will give us flexibility to have, to redo, to have debt service reduced by $50 million for the first seven years, which will help us reduce the impact of any rate increase to the residential customers. And removing H gives us flexibility to give the best scenarios because removing section H capable, give us flexibility to have cash savings rather than net present value savings. Because right now, our scenario is for cash savings. And that's what the objective was for our scenario, what we want to accomplish, which is $50 million per annum for next seven years.
Okay. I'm not too sure if, Tina from Gita, if you could probably give us a full explanation between the pros and cons of both scenarios so that we can, because I'm still going to introduce the amendment. So, but go ahead and please explain so that everyone will get that warm and fuzzy feeling.
Thank you, Senator. Today's interest rate environment, low interest rate environment has really helped us achieve a couple of goals. Besides savings, they're also able to provide immediate debt service relief in certain years to allow them to absorb the new, the new system coming on without big impact, I mean, without the impact to the ratepayers. And so even by extending the debt by an additional 10 years, your interest rate environment allows you to do that. The rates would be lower than where it was when we first did this bond in 2012. So again, time is of the essence. We can beat, before the rates start going back up. But the rates today are, allow us to do this and still provide total savings to, for, for the bond refunding.
So you were explaining which one of the pros and which one of the cons? I mean, of, of whichever scenario. There's an amendment that exists today on the bill. If it was to go back, do we still get a savings on a long term? We're not looking at you can save today 4 million, then, then in 10 years, we're right back to where we should have just stretched it out, get the renewal, get everything to balance out, and no more increases. That's, that's something I'd like to hear from, from Gita, if you, if you could.
Yes. So, so again, we do have the traditional refunding at the current terms. But, and that's what we have on scenario one. Without extending, you're still able to save money. With the interest rate lowered, we're able to levelize your debt service at a lower level. And yes, at a little bit more extended, but it, it still allows more savings to the ratepayers in the long run. In the, in that period where we can start transitioning to the better fuel.
I just don't want to sound lost. We look at first scenario, the way the bill is introduced with the amendment. Explain that part, and then explain if we restore it to the way the bill was first introduced. And I'm not, I think that's why I understood it.
Yes.
Is that the end of the day, if it went back to its original bill, you will get a savings. It's just, it's further out. It, it extends your savings versus making the savings today for tomorrow, correct?
So you're still, with the current version of the bill, you're still getting, you, you are achieving more savings at the, at the front end. With the, with the, if the bill is restored to its original intent, there is going to be an opportunity for GPA to offer more savings to the ratepayer for a longer period of time.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. We're, we're, we're exchanged. Thank you.
The Chair?
The Committee of the Holes backed from recess. Senator Rogel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just if I could ask Tina to explain a couple things, or maybe to confirm, and also if I can draw the members' attentions to, if you're able to get your committee report open, attachment one. Attachment one shows a comparison of all three refunding scenarios. There's scenario one, scenario two, and scenario three. Under scenario two, Tina, correct me if I'm not mistaken, the way the, if we were to restore the language to the original version of the bill, it would essentially be allowing for scenario two. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So under scenario two, I know there's been a lot of talk about how the savings is being calculated, and that's something I wanted to clarify here. Under scenario two, technically, if you take away that term net present value, there are no savings. It's actually 24.3 million in the red at the end of the total term of the refinanced bonds. Is that correct?
That is correct.
However, with this new language, it would still save about 52.8 million if you remove the term net present value and you just say dollar for dollar savings. So that scenario one is 52 million. Scenario two is 24 million.
You're paying, in scenario one...
You would save 52.8 million, correct?
Cash, yeah. You have the cash savings over 20 years, or 10 years.
And then scenario two, you actually are in the red 24.3 million if you take away the net present value calculation and you just do straight dollar for dollar.
Yeah, that's what it's showing there.
So let me explain why that is and correct me if I'm mistaken. Scenario two, which is the scenario the GPA wants, would allow for that 15 million in savings for the first six years. The problem is that goes down in year seven to only 9 million, year, sorry, year eight to only 9 million, year nine to 9 million, year 10 to 9 million, year 11 to 9 million. Then by 2035, and 2035, they will be paying 16.2 million, whereas if the loan is not extended, they pay nothing. So in other words, paying 16 million in a year where they wouldn't pay anything on this Series 2012 bond if we don't extend it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So in other words, if we don't extend the term in 2035, there's no debt service because obviously, we didn't extend the term. So from 2035 to 2044, they wouldn't be paying anything in debt service because it's all paid off.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the cash flow of things. But then here, we're talking about the cost of borrowing money. And that's why we, we...
Right.
Yeah, it's just the cost of borrowing money.
That's where net present value comes in.
Correct.
Net present value is usually how you determine what's the value of that savings today versus later on in the future. So now, if you use the net present value, you're still saving more money with a net present value calculation under scenario one where you don't extend the term. That's where you have a $45 million net present value savings. Now, if you do extend the terms, the net present value savings is 15 million.
Correct. So Senator, if I also could, at the, on, on that same page, under scenario two, on the 1, 2, 3, 4, where it says refunding par, your, our par is how much you're going to borrow. So we're going to borrow 230.9 million, and the refunded par amount is 285.8. So we're taking out, we're reducing the overall debt service or the outstanding debt. And that's part of how you calculate net present value. So it kind of evens out. And to, to, if you look at scenario one, you're going to borrow 227.3 million to take out 265. So even if you compare the two refunding pars, you're only borrowing an additional, you're only borrowing an additional 3 million to take out 20 million. So again, it's, it's all part of, they take all of that into consideration when they're looking at the net present value versus just the cash. So again, the, the value of money is cheaper today to take out that large debt. So, so that's the difference between net present value versus cash.
Right. But even under the net present value calculation, scenario one saves more in total net present value.
That's correct.
45 million versus 15. Now, the other thing I wanted to clarify is there's a lot of talk about levelizing the payments. So I just wanted to clarify, I think what is meant when they say levelizing out the payments is the idea is that the total debt service on all bonds is leveled, not this bond. This bond, the debt service payments aren't structured necessarily in a, under scenario two, are not structured in a level manner. In fact, they balloon at the end. Is that correct?
Well, not exactly balloon. If you go two pages back, on page two of that attachment, it shows you there what the debt profile is. The red line shows you where the debt service is at 50 mil through 2030, drops down to about 45 in 2031, and then it drops down to 20 in 2035. Whereas the new debt service, which is the teal line, you'll see it goes, it goes up to fif, almost 50 in 2023, then it drops to 30, and it stays at 30 all the way from 2024 to 2044. And that's why it's leveled all the way on, and that's, that's what the, this proposal brings to the table, that levelizing for that period. And it shows you the difference on what the current debt service is in that light gray and then the new debt service. So, so again, it gives you...
You're, you're talking level when, not just for these bonds, you're talking when you count the other bonds.
Overall, the overall.
Their bond portfolio, so to speak, right?
Yes.
So I'm talking about this bond.
Yes.
Just the 2012 Series A. How are those payments structured under scenario two, the preferred scenario for GPA?
Right.
How are they structured?
So just for this one, you're looking at reducing debt service from 20, like you said, but then adding the debts, pushing the debt service at the back end from 2035, it's new debt service, 16, and then 10, and then 27. That's the new debt service for that new period.
Madam Chair.
Senator Rogel.
Yes. So just to clarify, in 2035, under scenario two, right, what's the debt service payment going to be for this bond, 2012 Series A, under scenario two, in 2035? Is it correct that's going to be 16.2 million?
16.2, correct.
And then at the following year, 2036, is 10.1, and then 10, and then 10, and then 10, until you hit 2041, is it 2041 or 2042?
2041.
41, it's then, it goes up to 27 million.
Yes.
That's what I mean by balloon payments. It's actually increasing the amount at the end. In addition to that, in a way, when you're extending the term out, this is something where you wouldn't be paying anything on these Series 2012 bonds in 2035 because you would have paid it off. But by extending it, you're now paying 16 million, 10 million, 10 million, 10 million, et cetera, till you hit 27 million. Whereas all those years, you wouldn't be paying anything had you retired the bonds at its original maturity date, its current maturity date.
Right. So again, you're correct, Senator. We would normally just present scenario one, but by presenting scenario two, there are other objectives that are added to the pile, and that's why scenario two is being presented.
Could you explain what those other objectives were? Or is that for GPA to explain?
GPA would be better at explaining it.
Okay, one final question. And who decides? Gita, are you acting as bond counsel for GPA? Or one of your, excuse me, one of your contractors acting as bond counsel for GPA?
So what we would do is, as financial advisor, we present the general scenario. But if there are other objectives, we would work with them to find the best scenario that meets their objective and still, and still will be, according to the standards we set whenever we, we do our bond refunding. So again, we presented the first, and then because they had other objectives, other for the financing.
There, could you please explain what are those objectives that led to making scenario two the preferred scenario?
So again, they were wanting to reduce operating costs in the period of 2024. Instead of 4 million, you're, they wanted to add an additional, or lower their debt service by an additional 10 mil. So from 4 to about 15. And at that time, they have the new power plant coming in. They also have, so their plan, you know, with the reduced fuel savings and the reduced debt service savings, they would be able to offer, bring on the new power plant without a big impact to the consumer because of course, there's also the payment for the power plant that has to occur. So again, trying to manage the, the operational expenses so that you don't see a big jump in expenses. You're, you're more of a level expense.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm out of time.
Thank you, Senator Rogel.
I'd like to rise to a point of inquiry, Madam Chair, simply because this is so technical that, and I used the term level quite a bit, but I think it's so important because we're going to have a tough time debating these amendments if they're proposed, if we don't get some more technical information. Point of inquiry, John, I think you got to nail this one here because this is where we're having the trouble understanding, and Tina tried to do it. I think she did a good job. But the issue you keep laying out to us is that you, maybe it's not level, maybe it's bridge, because you need that six to seven years of debt service savings. Otherwise, we may incur and not have the savings to be able to realize, to, to, to offset LIAC until you get to the new plant, which lowers your fuel costs because now you use a lot less fuel and cheaper fuel when you get to the construction and operation of the plant. Am I understanding that right?
The refinancing and the fuel savings are all going to occur at the same time, 2024. So all we're doing is maximizing the savings to the ratepayers in 2024. Otherwise, the savings will be for the ratepayers beyond 2033 because then the debt goes down. And the ratepayers of 2024 are going to have to pay, are not going to get as much savings back from the results of the new power plant. So it's really, you know, it's really taking care of the, the next 10 years of ratepayers. And why is that? What happens over the next 10 years? There's going to be more load growth. So others are going to be able to come in and pay for more of their share of that. So therefore, not all that savings, again, is going to end up for customers. So therefore, not all that savings, again, is going to end up for customers ten years from now. But maybe another angle here I would like to ask is this. We're really asking the legislature to authorize us to go out on a financing, refinancing. The criteria the legislature has set up is two percent net pressing value savings, no? The decision, really, we, GPA is not the one that has the final decision for us on this refinancing. It's the PUC that has that. And of course, that's why the rates were established for the PUC to handle that. Now, without the amendment, if, if the language that we asked for is placed back in, the PUC can still decide whether they'll do the scenario that we're asking for or do the scenario that seems that, you know, for more giving savings today, but incurring less savings, if you will, in 2024. So really, that's a scenario that the PUC should establish. And that's what all I'm asking is, the legislature is to authorize us to do the refinancing because there are going to be ratepayer savings. And then the other issues about what opportunities are there, what are we alleviating? Well, when you look at rates also, you look at the long term of rates. You don't want rates to just go down today and then next year, they go up the ceiling, we're back to the fuel oil scenario. So when you look at the base rate, you try and keep that level as far as possible without having to impact, no? So if we don't do the financing, and again, it's still subject to the PUC approval, as we are suggesting, then they'll have that impact. That twelve million dollar impact will not be there for the consumers in 2025. It'll be there for the consumers in 2034. Because that's when the debt cost goes down, no?
So in essence, we're limiting the flexibility in terms of what you asked for because in the end, it's going to be determined by PUC.
If you leave it the way, if the estimate or as strike out, not the way we are asking, you're limiting the, the options of the PUC to make that decision. And what's the, looking at all the different scenarios that are before us, the new plan, growth, everything, what do they see would be the best scenario to, for the ratepayers, no? But, so that's why, again, we're asking for authorization to refinance. We met the, we're going to meet the criteria, which is about two percent, which is what all the other government entities' bonds were refinanced based on that criteria. Of course, some are more, some are less, and all of that. And again, we have a third party, another party here, the ratepayers that is, what you call it, put together, again, it's kind of a little, we have to be careful here because we're going out for bonds and the ratepayer, the bonding companies are saying you will have a PUC to decide the rates for the ratepayers. But in some legislation, we're limiting the, the opportunity for the PUC to determine which financing will be the best for them and the ratepayers.
And in the end, yeah, in the end, we have a trust but verified system. I'll just, I'll close it right now.
Please, thank you.
In the end, we have a trust but verified system, but the fact is, is that that is the CCU and the.
Your point of order, Senator Rigel.
We're done with.
Point of order, Madam Chair. We've completed both rounds of questions, so we should be moving on to the third round, which is for amendments.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. We'll move on to the third round for.
I would like to make a motion notwithstanding the rules that we allow another round of questions, five minutes each. I think we've got these people here, and it's a very important issue, and we're obviously, I think, lacking some information.
There's been a motion to add an additional round for questions. Is there an objection? Okay, we will have an additional round, beginning with Senator Moynihan, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm pretty clear by the historical discussion that Mr. Beneventi has put forth and his team and Gita as well. Maybe I can just ask for one more plea to GPA to put it in another word that possibly clear at this time, based on the information that you shared. What would you like to say to us, sir, to ensure we can move this forward?
Senator, I think I said quite a few, but just to summarize it, no? We have put together a plan to, to address the, the four, five concerns that we have been, that has been over us over the past several years, no? To comply with the consent decree, to accommodate more renewables, and now most especially since it's all mandated by targets, to meet load growth and to replace the aging plan that we have, no? And all of this, we were challenged to find a way to make that happen at the least cost for the consumer, no? We have successfully done that. We successfully contracted various things to make that happen. And of course, to accomplish all of this, it's like you don't go down and buy a new car and end up not costing you anything, in fact, saving you a lot of money. This scenario is going to do that. I mean, it's far beyond what I would even have thought would have happened. Part of that, again, initiative, is the refinancing, which will meet the legislature's two percent and which all of this are really being addressed by the PUC because they're the ones coming back. And for a long time, we couldn't get through to building the new power plant and could, we could address the potential massive rate increase that would have come with it. But we finally came up with a plan, and the PUC is very aware of this plan. And this is what it is. And again, the refinancing is the bridging or the levelization or just as shown here, which we have provided to the, to the underwriters as our need. They've also worked out different scenarios. And again, I'm not the, we're not, GPA is not the final authority on this, no? It's the PUC, right? But then, all I know is that by not submitting the request as we had asked, you're limiting what we had already told the PUC we're going to go after and which they could still say yea or nay to, no? But if you don't, if you go and strike it out, what we are saying, you have limited the PUC now to just the debt service coverage reduction of five million versus the fifteen million that we're asking for. So in a nutshell, that counters the, the plan, requires readjustment, and I'm sure you'll see that the impact of the ratepayers in 2025 will be significantly less in, in fuel savings, in total savings. But then in a nutshell, really, Senator, is why we're asking for this scenario. We could have just said, okay, whatever it is, right? GPA needs to ask for what it has to do to get the operation, keep the lights on. The rate, the PUC tells us how, you know, works with us how to keep those rates down. And this is one way. So all I ask is, please approve the, don't change the, and limit the PUC's, limit the PUC's options to try and find what they believe is the best for the ratepayers, no? And again, that could be considered, I'm not sure, contrary to the indentures that we had said that you will let the PUC decide these decisions, anything that has to do with rates. And of course, the whole evening afternoon, we've been talking about rate, how would the rate this, the cost savings, that's all related to, seems to be under the purview of the PUC. So we, you limit the refinancing options. What would the rating agencies or others say, you know? I don't, I'm not sure, but I'm sure they'll, they'll look at that from a different light, no? That's all, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi. Thank you for explaining that. It's the PUC is the final decision, and you're offering the best plan, and the best plan for this will be with the amendments. I want to work with you, sir, and let's, let's see how we can do, but thank you once again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Moynihan. Senator Duenias.
This is Masi, Madam Chair. So since I used most of my time during my point of inquiry, I just want to finalize this. So, John, what you're explaining, I think, more than, more importantly as well, and this is where I was going to try to go for my final analysis, is that the subject matter experts on rates really comes down to the CCU and the PUC in terms of the proposals. That's why on your total debt service here and everything else, it's all factored in to the long-range plan, and that's why you gave us this elaborate presentation when you first asked for this refinancing. Is it, would that be a correct statement?
That's, that's correct, Senator.
So if we were just to sit here and base ourselves on looking at the financing scenarios and not factor all of your testimony in the committee report where, and as you have just stated, the final analysis comes down to the PUC because they are the subject matter experts who are to determine at any given time what the best rates and the best capability of savings for the ratepayers.
That's correct.
So once again, your prey to us is keep the language as proposed for the reasons of why you stated throughout your entire complete testimony, which factors not just whether or not there's an amortization schedule that's longer or shorter, and not just the numbers in total, but the whole proposal and how it works from your present day with the old clunky system to the new modern system, to the renewables, to the fuel savings, to the whole kit and caboodle. Would that be pretty close?
That's very close, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This is Masi, Senator Duenias, Senator Torres. Do you have any questions?
No questions. I just want to thank the, one of the senators for walking us through the different scenarios because I think that that helped just justify the, what we're talking about, leveling off and all of that. But thank you also, GPA and Gita, for your explanations.
Speaker Trelochy.
Thank you. I'm concerned about this talk about the massive rate, what is it, the massive rate increases that we are trying to stem off, reduce the impacts of the rate increases, I believe the CFO stated earlier. But the new power plant is already, you know, being built, and the renewables are already planned, regardless of this bill, isn't that correct? That those are going to go through? Have you begun work on the, have you contracted to build the power plant?
Yes, I'm trying to understand your, your question.
I'm asking whether you've contracted to build the power plant already, the new power plant.
That's correct.
Right? And the new power plant is expected to reduce or increase our rates?
It's expected to reduce the rates.
All right. I thought that was the whole promise of the new power plant, is going to reduce our rates.
No, Senator, that wasn't the whole premise of the new power plant.
Well, that's part of it, right?
The whole premise, no, the whole premise of the new power plant is one, to meet the consent decree, to accommodate for more renewables, to meet the load growth, to replace aging equipment that are going to fail us, and to accomplish all of this with ratepayer savings and less impact. And again, these are all the scenarios that we had to meet, to, to, to meet that, no?
All right, yes.
And so, and of course, the most sensitive part, which of course everyone understands and knows or feels, is the rates at the end. But, but the whole, let's not forget, if we don't, no matter what happens, we're going to have to get this plan built and paid for.
Right.
All we're trying to do is find different scenarios to allow for the ratepayer's cost to be reduced. And reducing it ten million dollars in 2025, to me, is a lot of money because any little bit, now, you mentioned earlier about two dollars a month, that's twenty-four dollars a year because that's spread out over forty thousand customers, fifty thousand customers. But that's a lot of savings, okay? It's not, it's not, you know, so any little bit that we can save is important. So again, I just want, I didn't want to, Senator, to get the, the objective loss. And, and again, we're, we're trying to fit in all the savings, including the refinancing, the entire refinancing, for everyone to get it in 2025, no?
All right, but you, you built the, you contracted to build the power plant prior to this refinancing. You, the, the plan behind it is to reduce rates. And the, the attachment or chart that we received from the Bank of America, is it? Bank of America? Anyways, they said they are not a municipal advisor or fiduciary, Bank of America, but they gave us all these estimates. So they, they also predict, like we have heard through the PUC and GPA, that the new power plant is going to result in a reduction of rates. So you talked about two dollars per month, twenty-four dollars a year, that's the estimate, right? That's without financing. No, I take it back. Without financing, rates will go from two hundred and sixty-eight to two hundred and twenty-two, forty, forty-six dollars? A forty-six dollar reduction in a bill, that's the estimate, without financing. With financing, the savings on your bill is going to be forty-eight dollars versus forty-six. And so that's what you're describing as two dollars a month, twenty-four dollars a year to taxpayers. But what is this massive rate increase you're talking about? That we're trying to stem off.
Let me go back a little bit further, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Twenty twelve was when this issue, this issue about a new power plan first came through to meet consent decree requirements. Twenty twelve, when was the decision made to go with the new power plan? Twenty sixteen, what was the concern prior to that? The concern is what I was mentioning to you, and was a little dated, the massive rate increases because you're going to build this hundred and eighty megawatt of new power plant, how are we going to play, pay for it? So we came up with ideas, how are we going to pay for it? We came up with requiring a new power plan that is very, very, very efficient so that we can reduce our total fuel costs, no? So that's when the massive rate increase came that I mentioned. I apologize for not being clear. Then later on, that's when we came to the PUC and we convinced, showed them this is our, all the potential initiatives that will reduce the total cost to the ratepayer and provide more savings to them. And I mentioned that refinancing, retirement of cabors, retirement of some other units, insurance costs, reduction of PD eight and nine costs and other tanks, even looking at the point that we can add another forty-five million dollars of savings with the plan being able to burn natural gas, which some are really against right now. That's an additional forty-five million dollars a year savings. And we're not even talking about that yet because we can get the power plan built or at least get that savings to the consumer. But that's the next step that we will analyze. So here's huge savings, and this is how we avoided the massive. And that's why we're here before you today to implement the initiatives that we had put together. And all I ask for you is that we, we. And all I ask for you is that we, we presented this, this program to the PUC and I ask you not to limit their options to, to either agree with us or disagree with us. They may disagree and just say, okay, no, I want all the savings today for the customers. That's not my call. My call is to put together what I believe will provide the ratepayers most savings, which is what I've put before you. All I ask is please don't limit the, don't limit the PUC's options to make the decision that I'm before you, because I'm not doing a very good job. It seems like I may not be doing a very good job convincing everybody that that's the way we should go.
Well, Mr. Beneventi, thank you. I'm looking at these charts. So I'm trying to use the figures that we have in front of us as opposed to, you know, speculation. But when you talk about massive rate increases unless we pass this bill, I think that's kind of misstating it because this bill is going to pass and it's going to allow refinancing in one, one form. Not, not the form exactly as you're asking because it's not going to give you $15 million in additional operating costs in the first year, right, in 2024, to reduce your operating cost by 20, by 15 million. It's not going to allow you to borrow more money over the course of an additional 10 more years, right? It's not going to allow an increased payment. When these increases in payments come in line under your scenario, under the chart that Senator Rigel talked about earlier, I think I want to go to 2027, for example. Is it 2042? It increases to 27 million. Had, I mean.
Senator, may I ask, what's your objection to, to?
No, if I could ask the question, Mr. Beneventi.
Mr. Beneventi.
I have no objection to savings. I'm trying to save, I'm trying to find out why. Why would GITA be recommending to us to save $15 million as opposed to $45 million? I'm trying to get that clear because we have to explain that to, to taxpayers, ratepayers. Yes, you're going to, you're going to entice ratepayers who are going to be receiving a $2 decrease in their bill per month by, by saying generally, you know, reduction in rates. But I think if, I, I, they're going to get a reduction in rates whether we pass this bill or not. And they're going to get a reduction of rates if we pass this bill the way it is. Only certain people might get a reduction in rates if we pass your scenario because you want that money upfront. You want, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in 20, what is it? When the rest of this bond is being paid off if we, if we extend it as you are asking. That's all I'm saying. And, and we've done several refinancings that GITA has recommended. And, and this is, this is different than those. They don't, we, we never extended our debt or increased our debt as far as I know when we did those refinancing. And this significantly increases that by $45 million. Or no, I'm sorry. It reduces the potential savings by $45 million. And, and it looks like, Tina says, it's the cost of borrowing money. So it looks like we are financing, right, at these rates, kind of doing like an additional bond by extending it out for 10 more years and allowing those, those, you know, the 15 million savings upfront, yet you pay 27 million more later on, that type of thing. Yeah. Thank you. But I just want to clarify that either GPA is set on not increasing rates with this new power plant or if they have massive rate increases planned with the new power plant because they, you're using those terms and I, you have to be very clear, I think, and not missly, you know. This is not going to save us from massive rate increases if you have that plan. This is going to save $2 per month on, on bills for residential consumers.
Thank you, Speaker.
No, if I, thank you, Senator. Again, Senator.
I didn't ask a question.
No, may I? May I answer? It's okay.
Well, can I respond then?
No, your time is up, Speaker. Okay, thank you. Oh. Senator Munia Barnes, you have questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me an opportunity. And thank you to the panel members here this afternoon. And as I, as I look at this bill and try to see how we can facilitate this to be advantageous for the community as a whole, I, I think my question would be to you, Mr. Beneventi. If I may, maybe even a reiteration, if I've missed anything. And because I personally understand that this refinancing is a part of the overall plan to reduce the power rates and, and is parallel to another legislation that was introduced. And my question to you is if GPA does not pursue the refinancing of the bonds, how would this affect the transition to the new generators? Would it extend the timeline or impact the cost? I'm hoping I could at least get a variation, a reiteration from you if I've missed anything. Just, just to be clear and see how we can facilitate this.
Thank you, Senator. First of all, the refinancing here is really just meant to provide the ratepayer. Again, when I say ratepayer, I'm talking about the ratepayer of 2024, 2025, when the new power plant comes out. Maximum savings to them. It's not tied in to whether the, the new power plant is going to be constructed or, or not. That's, that's the Bill 213, which is another bill that is before, will be before the legislature.
Right.
Bill 212 is related to how we're going to pay for this new power plant and maximize the savings back to the ratepayers. And so to maximize the savings back to the ratepayers by doing it the way we've asked for the first five, six, seven years or so, eight years or whatever, the mortgages or debt service payment per year will drop about 15 million. If we go with the language that's there, it's going to drop to only 4 million. So therefore, in 2024, 2020, all the way to 2029, 2029, those, those customers are going to pay $10 million more annually for a power plan, no? That, or, and for the infrastructure that is being on the bonds that could last longer. So therefore, we're just trying to even out the payments to everybody using the equipment at the time of labor and maximize the people today. I like to say today, 2024, because today will be 2024 because that's when the, the debt service is going to drop, not in 2023 or today. Where we're, you know, it's 2024 when the new plan. And then the huge savings from fuel oil will help pay the other part, you know, the other part of the power plant, and then the rest flow back to the consumer. So we're maximizing that. That's the only difference. So if it's not refinanced, then, then it's just less savings going back to the consumer. If it's refinanced at a lower, a different scenario than what we're asking, then it's less savings, much less savings going back to the consumer. That's all.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I may, in reference to the previous speaker, if there was anything that you wanted to add that can enlighten us, I ask you to make your statement, your, based on her, her previous comments. Did you want to add anything more? Just giving you the floor. You, you.
That's okay.
Why is there an objection? I was just wanting to know if there was, if you wanted to add so that I could hear what you had to say could make a difference, at least for me.
There's been an objection. Please restate your question, Vice Speaker.
I just said there was a statement that Mr. Beneventi wanted to state.
This is a question and answer period.
Is our personal privilege?
This is, this is a point of order. We're here, we're, the rules are allowing us to ask questions. So ask questions of the panel. That's it. Not, not refer to other speakers.
So, Mr., Madam Chair, if I may.
Please state your question.
I just wanted to know that, I wanted to give Mr. Beneventi the opportunity to speak in reference to comments that he was making earlier. And if I didn't understand it clearly, he wanted to state and speak about what was presented to this body. And if he had any more insight that he could share that would be good for us to hear, then give him that opportunity now. And I, I extend that. I still have a couple of minutes, so that's why I was asking. Was just giving him the courtesy. That's all. So please, Mr. Beneventi, if you wanted anything, wanted to add anything based on what was previously asked.
Just, just a comment, Senator. Really, we're not, I guess, by taking of the word speculation, we didn't speculate in any of this, no? We came out with a plan, a doable plan. And we're, every step of the way, we've been proving our point. And, and it's achievable. So that, you know, that's all I wanted to say. So please, it's really, we've, we've done a lot of work. Not only myself or the rest of our staff, our consultants. Everyone looked at this plan, PUC, and say, hey, this is the plan that we have to do to save the ratepayers and sustain our rates and add more renewables and meet consent decree requirements and meet all of this. So it's really just the word speculation. My apologies if I, you know. But that kind of, I just wanted to correct that, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi. And thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity to pose my inquiry to this panel. Senator Masi.
This is Masi, Vice Speaker. Senator Brown, do you have any questions? Thank you very much. Senator Tidgley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This for GITA. I had the opportunity to look over the documents that were submitted in the Option 1, Option 2, Option 3. I'm looking at the, the very first part, the very first ways where it says funding scenarios. I mean, I know that Senator Rigel brought this up earlier, but I, you know, really trying to wrap my head around to understand this. Many of us don't have a background in finance. So to, the only thing that we understand really, in layman's terms and for the taxpayers that are listening to us, is very simple. Are we going to save any money, right? So after looking at this scenario number one, it shows here, you know, of course, all the way down to 2024. And then at the very bottom, what says total after 2044, it says 52,866,647. And so that's telling me if we were to go with scenario number one, we're going to save 52,866,647. Is that correct?
In annual cash flow savings. That is correct.
In annual cash flow savings. In other words, within those, how many years from there? 20 years, right? How many, from 2022 all the way to 44, so?
34.
34 years, right? All the way through, right? 34. And then I go to scenario number two. And then there's a, there's a, it talks 8,000, I mean, 8,910 on 2022. Then 2023 has 718, and it goes all the way down. And then it goes to a red in brackets.
Yes.
And it says 16 million beginning on 23, 16 million 294250. Does that mean that's what we have to pay?
That is, yes.
So the government of Guam is going to have to come up with $16 million, right? And then the following year, we're going to have to come up with 10. And the following and the following 10, 10, then we've been, gosh, the last four years, we're going to have to come up with 27 million. And then at the bottom, it shows in brackets, and to me, that always means a negative, right?
Yes.
That means that we would have had to pay 24,309, $901 more.
Yes.
With scenario number two.
Correct.
Well, scenario number three is pretty much the same, but it's a little bit more savings or, you know, less money that we have to fork out later on at $17 million.
Right.
Versus scenario two at 24 million. Now, when we talked about H and C in the bill, okay? If I'm not mistaken, H and C are there so that we are basically forced to take what's in the best interest for the people of Guam. In other words, what would be the most, give this the most savings, you know? And if I'm not mistaken, that's why H and C is there. If H and C is taken out, then that means that opens the door for GPA to decide to go to scenario two and scenario three, correct?
Right. But if I could, again, you're, if you're just looking at straight cash flow, that's what, that's what you're, that's what it comes down to. But you're also looking at the cost of money today. The lower, the interest rate, you're looking at, you're looking at borrowing money to pay off the old debt. So, so again, you're still achieving savings overall.
Do you have those calculations, Tina? To show us that, that, how you were saying it's, you know, it's, we're buying.
So we're talking about net present value savings. So on scenario one, straight, straight refunding, 45 million. Scenario two, yes, we're extending the debt. Yes, our cash flow is going to be affected by 24 million. But overall, we're saving money. We're saving 15.4 mil or 5.39% because the cost of borrowing money today is so much lower.
Okay, what is that in just in money amount? Because right now, on scenario two, we're ending up having to pay out 24 million versus scenario one, which we will save $45 million. But so on scenario two, can you put that in money savings instead of percentage?
The bonds that we hold today, we're paying interest of 4.39%. In scenario two, which is just a 12-year bond, we would pay, we would borrow 227 mil to take out 265. It would cost us 2.19%. Scenario two would only cost us an additional 3 mil to go the additional 10 years, 227 versus 230. And the interest rate is going, is still low at 3.16% versus the original bonds of 4.39%, which is why, even though we're extending, we're, we're borrowing just a little bit more to give us more cash flow savings. And we're still saving overall by 15 million, net present value savings.
In option what?
In option two.
Okay, so you're, so basically.
Just in option two.
So basically, I'll take 24,309.01, subtract 15 million, and that'll give me a more true reality on how much money that the government's going to have to pay out?
Um, no, that's not, net present value takes into the cost of, the cost of borrowing money today versus paying it out over time. And.
So to simplify it without using percentages because we don't have our calculator or anything like that. Tina, can you tell me then? In scenario number two, after all that's been in, in considered and the climate of today and buying cash, like you said, what is an estimate of how much in scenario two that taxpayers are going to have to fork out?
They're going to have to borrow an additional 3 mil.
3 million? So it's not going to be 24 million, like on this scenario? So it's, it's going to be 3 million?
Correct.
And scenario number three, which looks like it might be even lower in cash money-wise?
All they did in scenario three was provided cash flow savings in 2023. Because if you look at scenario two, there's, you know, a lower cash flow savings. The reason why scenario two is the preferred by GPAs because of that additional, you maximize that 15 million in cash flow savings from 2024 to 2030. This is $15 million less that GPA will have to pay during those seven years.
So scenario number three, going back to that again, because right now, what I'm looking, based on what? like, based on what you're saying, this 24,300 that we are going to assume as a debt later on is, in reality, is 3 million dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
But still, 3 million dollars, a lot, a lot. And then on scenario number three, are we still looking at 17 million in tax paying, a tax that we're going to have to use to pay off that debt?
Yes.
Okay, so 17, so scenario three is definitely, probably not a no-go. I mean, because you're looking at additional 17 million from the, that we have to pay out. However, scenario number one, that 52 million dollars, is that a savings?
Um.
And based on your estimate and the percentage you were talking about and everything like that, what is the real reality instead of 52?
So, so cash flow, cash in your pocket, you're gonna, every year, you're gonna save 1.7, then 4.2 mil until you pay off the debt. So, that totals the 52 mil. That's what that means. Net present value, you know, 45 mil is your total net present value savings.
So, basically, it's 45, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not really 52.
Correct.
In savings. Okay, so that means scenario number one means we have a savings of 45 million. Scenario number two is, actually, we'll have to pay out 3.1 million. And scenario, scenario number three is paying out 17 million at the end, after those many years. Okay? Now, I'm clear as to seeing really where the savings are at. I understand the importance on scenario number two for GPA because of the savings, oh, I'm on one minute. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Senator Blaz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Beneventi, based on all the discussions that were going on, based on scenarios one, two, and three, can you repeat again what GPA's preferred scenario?
Uh, scenario two.
Scenario two.
And?
Is it safe to say that when you're discussing, because I'm, I mean, that when you're talking about savings, you're not only talking about savings in as far as your payment storage, but you're more talking about the savings towards what the new renewable energies or what these power sources can provide so that it reduces the cost to the consumer?
Yes, it's all tied in together, Senator, including the, the bridging, the levelizing of the cost and everything, so that we can maximize the savings. Two, again, in this particular case, the, the next 10, about 10 years, which is actually going to be the burden part of the, of the new power plan, because there's less, there's less ratepayers paying for the power plan as in the later years of the, of the, of this financing period.
So, quite honestly, the scenario that you want hinges on basically what happens with an, with, with a bill that will be heard later on this body. In other words, a lot of this is dependent on whether or not you have the ability to build a new power plant. Am I correct?
The bill 212, like, 213 is related to here.
I understand.
The power, and this one is, again, just maximizing the savings to the?
And the challenge here, Mr. Beneventi, I guess, you know, is, is we have the responsibility, we have to separate out the two. We can't, I, you know, we don't have the ability of being able to foresee 213 with 212 or 212 with 213. I, I've got to deal with bill 212 as 212.
Yeah.
But I think that in, in this discussion, which is why I think there's, you know, a lot of consternation, confusion, and even some reservation in this, is, if, from, correct me if I'm wrong, from what I'm hearing from you, you're basically saying that the cost savings to the consumer will be spread out, because then, other than the need to be able to pay additional with scenario two as opposed to scenario one, is that it's going to be spread out, and it's going to be, it's going to be, basically, it's going to be a wash because of the savings that the consumers will get now with reduced power rates. Is that correct?
The, the scenario two will provide the most savings to the, to the consumers within the next 10 years.
And that's with the assumption that there is a new power plant?
Uh, that, that's with the assumption of a new power plant. Uh, yes, because there will be savings through the new power plant.
Okay.
Yeah.
And see, that, that's where, again, the, you know, I, please don't fall for the body in this thing, we have to separate out the two ideas. We have to, we're, we're dealing with, right now, a, a borrowing measure. Later, we'll be dealing with the authorization to be able to build. Okay? And I can't mix the two in this conversation.
Well, yeah.
Costco there has a little bit of a?
Understood, Senator. All I asked is, again, provide the opportunity for the, the PUC to decide on what, which scenario is best to handle the, the, again, maybe what you would say, the cash flow needs of the, of the ratepayers, so that the, the burden is spread out over time to, to all, and who, you know, considering all the other variables that are there, load growth, the?
Hang on, Mr. Speaker, my time's still moving, and it was, I'm not talking.
Okay. Sorry. So, that's all, that's all, Senator, all I ask is, I guess that's what's the language we put in there?
Okay, I mean, I, I just, okay, again, I appreciate all the, you know, the conversations, and I'm just trying to find where, at, as we say, at the end of the day, how, you know, your consumer, our, you know, the taxpayer base, okay, how they can get the best service at the best price, is what we're, we're, we're trying to find here. Okay? So, I'm, I'm hearing you, I can hear your frustration, but I can also hear, you know, and as far as the concerns from many of my colleagues too, with, with the questions. But thank you very much for, for, for the explanations and stuff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blaz. Senator Pito Trelahi.
Well, after several discussions and points of views by some of the speakers, I would think that scenario two would serve the best interest for, for us, so I'll stick with that, and I will support scenario number two, if anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Trelahi. Senator San Augustin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Simple question, and maybe, maybe Tina, or maybe John, with the CFO doing the math, scenario one, 1.7 the first year, on the other side, scenario two, 8.9, so that's about, what, 7.2 million, right? Simple math, go down the line, and if you go down the line on every scenario, there's only one time when we lose, which is the second year. And I know that others, my colleagues will say, no, it's after 2034. Understood! But we need to keep in mind, number one, when we save, and GPA, correct me if I'm wrong, when we save, you plan on using that to invest in GPA, so there'll be more savings as the years go by. Am I correct, right or wrong?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Then, when you add the new power plant, there's an additional savings, correct? And I know, Tina, when you look at what I mentioned, the math, right? If you look from 2022 to 2034, that's almost 90 million dollars of savings on scenario two, am I correct? Versus 45. I mean, simple math, 15, 4, eh, 10 million, count it down, almost 90 million dollars on scenario two, and if the savings continue with the new power plant, which GPA, that's how it's planned, and with additional power plant, then we expect additional savings on top of that that we're not seeing here. And at the same token, John, you mentioned several times, PUC, you have to go to PUC after this bill is passed, in whatever form and fashion, but one of the worst scenario is, if the bill is restrictive, PUC don't have a choice. When we go with the original bill, PUC will decide scenario one, two, or three, because the options are there for them to see, because Gita would have to present that. I mean, maybe not present it, but it's part of the package. PUC will decide if one is the best option for the people of Guam, not this body. This body is just to pass and give the opportunity for GPA to go to the PUC and ask for the authority to do refinancing, which will go to Gita, and Gita goes after what PUC decided. Am I correct, Tina?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I guess that pretty much solidified that my amendment will be proceeded. Thank you very much.
Sita Smausi, Senator San Augustin, Senator Rigel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, my question is for GPA. Under GPA's preferred scenario, or scenario two, what they're looking at doing is saving 15 million over seven years. So, that tells me there's a seven-year timeframe where they want to save the most money then, and then pay money more later on, compared to the other scenarios. My question is, what is it in those seven years that makes GPA want to save the most money across those seven years?
Is to provide the ratepayer over the next 10 years, the most savings that we can provide them, because, again, we're limited with the number of ratepayers over the next seven years until growth and growth occurs, which, again, the new power plan and the renewables are going to provide adequate capacity for growth. The military growth is coming, no? Data centers are starting to come to Guam. All of this are going to add more and more energy revenues, which will therefore take care of all those other needs in the, in the, in the latter years. And just as Senator San Augustin has shown, there's one way we need to look at it. The, the savings in the first, first, up to 2034, if you add them all together, that's substantially more than the scenario one. So, if you're looking at it on a cash flow basis, and we look at the next 10 years, look at the savings for the, for the, the ratepayers of the next 10 years, so more than the 4 million per year. So, that is trying, understanding that the new plan costs money, most especially in the beginning years, and therefore, we're trying to minimize the impact to the ratepayers, I like to say, of today, because that's what I'm looking at, is the next 10 years. So, that's, GPA has no other, no other, what you call it, reason for wanting this. We don't need the cash for ourselves, no? We are in a good position in terms of, of our, our finances, and we've imagined, staying within our budget, the, we haven't asked for a base rate increase again since 2012, 2013, and so, even with higher inflationary costs and everything. So, we're managing within that, and I see that going on. It's just the intention is to maximize the number, the rate, the return, the savings to the ratepayers over the next 10 years. That, that's all, Senator.
Right, that's my question. Why focus on these 10 years as opposed to the long term?
Because the 10 years is like people of today, if you will, ratepayers of today. The longer term, the, what we're putting on today, and the burden that our people today are taking on, is going to be there for those in the longer term without much of a burden, because there are more people, more customers that would address that cost. And again, that's why, why would you want to have more savings if you did put a net present value? Why would you want, not want the, why would you want the 45 million versus the 15 million? So, but if you look at it in reality, you get the 45 million net present value cash today, but then 2024, you're going to be paying not, not, what you're going, you're going to be, not 4 million, but you're going to be paying 10 million more than that in, in that year. So, again, people of today are, to me, the first 10 years, in any planning horizon, whether you go integrated resource plan or anything, you look at the outreach of 20 years, but you really try to implement what's the best for the next 10 years, because that's, that's the, you know, that's more of a reality for, that, that's all, Senator.
Okay, also, on, on attachment two of the committee report, there's an estimated bill in 2025 for average residential customers. This was presented by GPA, and it shows in it, first of all, it shows rate schedule R, it shows 2025 with financing and 2025 without financing. So, it shows what the estimated bill would be on a certain type of bill, and that's what the speaker was previously mentioning, there's a $2 difference. What is this based off of scenario, which scenario is this based off of?
This is based on scenario two.
Do you have anything showing what it would be based on the other scenarios?
Not at this time.
So, based on scenario two, it would save roughly $2. Also, on, on the same page, it looks like it's showing a base rate increase in 2025 even with the financing. Is that correct? On the, under non-fuel energy charge, first 500 kilowatts, it shows the existing rate at .069, and then it shows 2025 with financing, .075.
Yes, for this sample billing, what we did is, we added in a recommended base rate by our rate consultant at that time.
So, are you guys already planning on a base rate increase?
Uh, this is a scenarios that, when we were working on a new power plant, we were looking at what is the, to meet our capital needs, which is to improve our infrastructures, plus the new power plant, what will be the healthy rate for the operation of GPA. So, it is the consultant, rate consultant's recommendation a couple of years ago, and we just put that in for sample billing. When, when we went before the PUC to show how to pay off the, the, the new power plan, the new power plan, it, capacity fee and operation and maintenance fee is paid from the base rate. The fuel savings are on the LEAC, so we know we're going to have a lot of fuel savings, but we have to pay for the power plan. So, there will have to be an adjustment in the rates, in the base rate, to accommodate the new payment, but the total, the, the end result, because of the higher fuel savings, that's going to offset the base rate, the end result is savings to, to the consumer. So, if you look, if the, the refinancing occurs, then that savings will go to, to the consumer there. So, yeah, because that is the challenge that the PUC put to us, too, is how do we not, how do we not have a rate increase on the base rate? So, to do that, one of the initiative is the refinancing that we're asking for, which will mean, if, if the base rate would have gone up to, without the, without the refinancing would have been 8%, with refinancing, it would now come down on the base rate. But Senator, it's still all savings to the consumer at the end, but we have to balance the, the, the rate, rate itself to, for the appropriate allocation.
So, are the plans right now to increase the base rate? Because according to this schedule, you're planning, even with financing, to increase the base rate.
The plan right now is not to have any base rate increase, and that's why we're before you today to help us. And that's why we're before you today to help us with the refinancing, so therefore that that base rate gives us more and more of a fighting chance.
Right, but the rate schedule here shown with the proposed refinancing includes a base rate increase even with financing.
Can I answer your question, please?
Yes, please. Answer honestly, please, thank you.
Allow the opportunity for us to eliminate that base rate, no? Refinancing by looking at the refinancing, retirement covers one and two, PD cost reduction, and all the other ones that I mentioned earlier. All of those are initiative to get rid of that base rate. But it's there to point out that this is still part of the scenario, how do we get it down? So we accomplish this, of course. The PUC was not going to just approve any. We had to justify and show that our cost is exactly what we achieved, no? And at the end, if we're short, then that's what the adjustment has to be made. So that's what I mean. If we don't do this and do that, then there'll be some adjustments and that, that's all. Still, the savings will still go to the ratepayers. And again, we're not, we're not asking for anything other than, then again, to accommodate the needs to pay for the plan so that we can have these huge savings and then give the rest back to the consumer. And the consumers over the next 10 years, most especially, as shown in the cash flow. And that's the plan that we have put together. Better with the PUC have been challenged to go after these initiatives, and that's why we're here today, so that we can achieve that goal.
Okay, so it sounds like the purpose of this bond refunding is to save more money on the front end on those 10 years you talk about in order to pay for the increased costs that it's going to take to build the new power plant, both the one at Ukudu and the one down at PD, to pay for those increased costs of building two new power plants. And then, when more renewables come online and reduce the cost of fuel and the cost of power overall, that's when you're hoping that will offset the additional funds you'll be using to pay for the bond if it's extended out?
No, not exactly the way you said it, Senator. The, again, the, yes, for the next several years, 10 years to absorb the cost of the new plan and to maximize the savings back to the consumers. As we go to the future years, the base rate component, where that 16 million is going to come in, never mind the fuel component, because that's no longer related to fuel and renewables. That's only related to the base rate. The later years, with growth, there's additional revenue coming in from just the base rate. That would help take care of the cash flow of the later years. The people that need the help today are the ones in the next 10 years, not the, and the one that, the people that need the help today, it's not just a one-time shot. As you know, you can inject $50 million into the LEAC, but then next six months, you need to raise the rates. It's not sustainable. So that's what we're trying to do, is, as you can see, a 10-year sustainable rate is kind of what we're trying to put together. Because again, like the Senators and Augustin showed, and again, this is where, you know, some look is that, yeah, there's 52 million for the first, but if you add all this other one on the scenario two, that's 153 million that the ratepayers of today and maybe in my lifetime, because I probably won't live beyond, you know, 10 years from now, that's the people going to get 153 million versus the 52 million on the rest, no? Let the others pay then, because they can afford it, because other debts go away and reduce the total cost. So I think, you know, we're always concerned about the people of today. And that's why when we plan, we plan for the first 10 years, and let that be a reality. So that's all, Senator. I think that's, I hope, I don't know whether that answered that, but that's what I was thinking.
Sure. Also, what did you do with the 15 million in ARP that the governor gave you to avoid rate increases?
The 15 million went directly to the LEAC, no? It went to all the customers on the LEAC. That's the 15 million.
But you still raised the LEAC.
If you notice the, yeah, of course, why, Senator? Even if I get, you went to the gas station today, and I give you $10 and you got, or I give the service station $10, but then next week, the price of, you know, we have no control about the price. But what did that do? That put in a step. In other words, instead on July, August 1st, going from 11 cents to 17 cents, that allowed it to go from 11 for two months, then to 13 for two more months, then to 15, and then to the 17. It was a step process to alleviate, because there's no way that you can put in enough money or, you know, cash from your organization to sustain a new rate increase. We did that for a long time, and then we came to the end. We put in as much as 30 million from other cash sources within GPA to help the customer. Now, as time goes by, we're trying to put that back into the, to the till to be prepared for the next pandemic three or four or what other emergencies. So that's why it did go directly to the consumer, to the ratepayers.
Okay, also, if I could draw your attention to page 96, there's a part here where it talks about 16 million set aside. What is that 16 million set aside?
I don't think we have the same information, Senator. What, were, page 16 or what?
On the proposed scenarios, on scenario two, page two. Sorry, page one under scenario two. Now, that's added to our committee report. But I believe you guys should have those scenarios also that was presented.
I could, I can answer that. On our bond scenarios, you have your bond power amount, your premium, senior lien reserve fund release, 720, and then the set aside is 16.2 mil. That's the set aside being held by the trustee. As mentioned earlier, they do monthly deposits to get ready for the upcoming debt service. And then at the bottom on the uses, again, none of it is released to the, to the power authority. It goes into the payment of the escrow to pay the old debt, and then cost of issuance, and then there's a, what they call the miscellaneous or additional proceeds, just to round it to the sources of funds.
Okay, thank you. So for GPA, again, under the proposed scenario two and with the proposed rates and the amount that you guys put that could be saved with financing, as a previous speaker was noting, it, under the proposed scenario two, it would only save really about $2 a month. And again, you noted that you did not have scenario one or three. Can I ask why there was nothing prepared for scenario one or three?
Our consultants, who has been working on it, they have not able to finish the calculation yet.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Our rate consultants was working on the financial forecasting, and they were not able to finish the computation.
So they were, I'm sorry, one more time, the mask, it's hard to understand.
Our rate consultants have been working on it. So far, they have not finished the study yet.
So are they working on something that would show the potential power bill under scenario one or three? Or did they, were they only instructed to look at scenario two?
They're still working on scenario one, but they have not finished it.
Any idea when they'll finish it?
I talked to them last week. They're supposed to be getting something this week. They were still having, they're still working on the calculation.
Okay, again, I just, I wish we had that. You know, then we could also see some comparisons there on how it would affect power bills, looking at scenario one and scenario three. A little concerned that only scenario two was shown, and I think that's probably because GPA's made it clear that scenario two is the scenario they want, which is what I've been trying to determine. Why is it, and I know you've said your version of explaining it several times, but it's not to my satisfaction, to be honest. But again, why look to save all that money in just the 10 years? I know you said something to the effect of, oh, later on, there'll be other things that's going to save money, right? And you've thrown out, you've thrown out myriad of things that supposedly will save money after the 10 years. But again, what you're looking at is you're looking at restructuring your debt in a way. And when people do that, there's strategic ways to do it. They either spread it out over a longer period of time, crunch it in a smaller period of time. Or in this case, what you've done is the scenario you've selected puts the biggest savings on the front end as opposed to the back end, puts all the savings in those 10 years. So what I've been trying to determine is what is it in those 10 years that's going to be so expensive compared to later years?
So again, Senator, we're trying to provide more savings to the customers as soon as we can. Pay for the power plan, make the savings as significant as possible. And so that's why we group all of these things into the next 10 years, no? And again, that savings is going to go back to the rate payer. So again, really, there's, there are other variables within the rate structure and everything, and I ask, again, the legislature to not limit the options necessary for the PUC to make this decision. Because it's really, if you, if you do, if you do take out that language, I know and assure you that it does make a rate impact in 2024, no? And you'll start to see that in our rate filings in the near future to make that reflection, no, based on reality or what has been agreed. So again, it does impact that. Again, you talk about cash flow. We're bringing more cash flow in the near future. The 52 million versus the 150 million, that's what people need, I believe. And so, but again, you may not agree with me, and the PUC may not agree with me, and others may not agree with myself, no? And that's okay. All I'm saying is don't limit their options. Because the decision on that is based on, when you, the rate packets, the rate needs of the utility has so many variables in it that you always have to not limit those opportunities to determine what is best for the ratepayers. And in one time, it may be the biggest savings today. And another time is really the most savings or the minimal cost over the less cash flow payments made every year for the next 10 years, which is what I'm proposing to be the best scenario, no? So that's, again, so, but in either case, there'll be a savings. I'm just saying, there's more, you know, we had made, put our best foot forward to maximize savings in 2024, and that's how we set it up.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi. We've completed the third round of questions. We'll take a brief recess to excuse the panel.